Hello and welcome to the September 6, 2018, meeting of the Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee Meeting. My name is Paul Winterstein. I am chairing today. Councilmember and regular Chair Stacy Goodman is absent, and so I'm chairing in her absence. Joining me is regular councilmember and committee member Tola Marts, and subbing is Chris Ray. Chris, thanks for coming this evening. We have two items on tonight's agenda, and we have them teed up. The first one has to do with the Old Town Subarea Plan, and it is on the agenda for about 45 minutes, that's the estimate. It may take longer, who knows? But we'll talk about, a little bit more about that in a moment. And then the other one is, we're going to take a first look at some proposed amendments to the Central Standards, and specifically about permitted land uses. And so, we have this evening Kristin Leeson. Hello, Kristin. Kristin will be guiding the conversation. Kristin and I had a conversation yesterday, and kind of reviewed what we hope to achieve today. No mysteries at all. This has been a topic that has been in front of council, in front of committee, in front of the Planning Policy Committee. We've had a lot of interaction and input and comments from citizens, members of the public, and we reached a point today, I think, with the Planning Policy Commission's work most recently, that they think they've delivered a final draft for council. So, it's possible, we'll do a review tonight, and then a month from now, maybe do a wrap-up. Don't know. But, my objective this evening is to try to go through, it's all of 13 pages long, I believe, at this point. Objective tonight is to go through that entire document, and that's the final plan. There's a lot of other information and data in appendices and history that's in the packet beyond the final plan. But the final plan itself, and that doesn't count the pages for the adopting ordinance as well, there's some language there as well. But that's the plan for this evening. I've asked Kristin to prepare that way. She's going to facilitate through that. I understand you guys probably have some comments and questions, and I have as well. So, Kristin, we'll turn it over to you, and looking forward to it.
Okay. So I'm going to start with the history. Councilmember Ray was not here during most of this. So, way, way back, the Wayback Machine, in 1999, we adopted the Old Town Subarea Plan. It has only been touched once since then, that was 2009, and the purpose was to remove any references to the proposed bypass. So, between 2007 and 2013, we pretty much focused on nothing but Central Issaquah. So by 2014, 2015, people said, "We need to refocus our energies on Old Town." So in 2015, there were council goals that were proposed, that were rolled into two council goals, that dealt with Old Town. One was to enhance Old Town vitality, to create a task force, which was done, to review the plan and standards, to talk about place-making, streetscape, pedestrian park, wayfinding, parking, and safety. The other one was to create an Old Town circulation plan. Now that will be wrapped up, most likely, into the Master Mobility Plan, which will get started soon. But, in the meantime, we have addressed the first goal. So like I said, in 2015, an Old Town task force was established. They came up with three recommendations for us. One was to come up with a streetscape plan, which was done. Another was to work with DIA on their partnerships and programs, which is being done. And another was to take a look at the Old Town Plan and design standards to review the neighborhood's competitiveness for attracting private investment. Now, it should be noted, too, that the task force was made up mostly of business owners and employees, and some of those people also lived in Old Town, but it was really more business-focused and economic vitality-focused than it was on Front and Sunset, than it was the whole Old Town. So when it was presented to council, it came up more than once, "What about the housing? And what about preserving the character outside of those areas?" So, we broadened it a little bit, and that's what we've done during this process. So in 2016, we initiated it. 2017, PBC made a recommendation to the city council. In March, it came back to Land and Shore a few times, and then in March 2018, the council remanded it back to the, it had changed quite a bit. It went from a thicker document down to a very thin document, but the Land and Shore and the council felt like there had been enough changes that it needed a public hearing. So they remanded it back to PBC with some considerations for them. They were supposed to look at the Old Town Subarea boundaries, the planned structure in relation to the visions that were being done for Central Issaquah, strategies for actions for traffic calming efforts, parking, and proposed zoning changes that had been made by Land and Shore at the time. So PBC went through a process, reviewed it again, we had a second public hearing, and here we are. So the purpose of this update, there were a few of them. One was to address the 2015 council goals. Another was to update the plan that hasn't been really revisited in 19 years. Another was to consider the task force recommendations, and lastly, to maintain Old Town's character while increasing its vitality. This last one I threw in for fun. Just to show you where we've come from, the first one, on the far left, is our plan that was adopted in 1999, and it was really, really big, and included the EIS. What you all saw the first one, the second time, or when it came to you the first time, was the Old Town Plan in the middle, it's about 51 pages. It very much followed the Central Issaquah format, but it was still considered too wordy. There was too much there, and it needed to be condensed and a little bit more regulatory. So that is what we have come up with now. Okay, so I'm going to move into the plan. I'll just start at the beginning. There's a map of Old Town, highlighting kind of public.
So Kristin, since I didn't see your presentation, I'm going to ask you a question that might be out of sequence. Sorry. This is just so that Trish feels good to know that I can't stay quiet for too long. Are you going to talk about the conversation about amending the boundaries?
Yes.
Because this would be a good time to talk about that, how we had that conversation at PBC?
I would be happy to do that. So I can actually address each of those things. But one of the, as I mentioned before, one of the issues that council had asked the commission to reconsider was the boundaries. So two things that had come up. One is that the old Route 10 area, just to the north of Old Town here, wasn't Central Issaquah, it was pulled out of Central Issaquah, and now it's just hanging out there. So, one of the things that the commission considered was pulling that into Old Town. Another consideration was removing the area south of Clark and Evans, which was essentially the school and a lot of the area which bounded both sides of Front Street. And removing that, and their rationale was that it just didn't have the same character and grid system and Old Town, original township feel that the area north of it had. So they went back and forth and back and forth, and we took a tour of Old Town and talked about all sorts of things. Eventually, because they realized we're going to, after this, be redoing or revisiting the design standards to look at heights, and whether we expand the design standards to cover single-family housing, you know, and areas south, they said, "Let's wait and see what happens with those," and revisit that one year after the design standards are adopted. So that was their plan for that. Anything else you'd like me to cover on that? No? Good? Okay.
Question?
Yes.
So does this map reflect the proposed revised boundaries, or the existing boundaries?
Nothing was revised.
Okay.
So the boundaries remain the same.
Okay. We did not change the boundaries at all?
The boundaries are not changed at all.
Okay.
Right. So part of the conversation was, the south end, we had comments from residents that they did not want to be pulled out of Old Town, because they recognized there were additional design standards that Old Town would benefit from, and other non-Old Town neighborhoods would not have, and they wanted that level of additional kind of design attributes. And then the north end, as we talked about, kind of what's East Gilman, we talked about adding that, because we initially got some comments from the Grange, that they felt like they were part of Old Town and might want to be part of Old Town. But as we talked through that, I think generally PBC decided that because we don't know what sub-area that area's going to go into, and that's a conversation we're having with the council at a workshop later this month, to not, it just, the whole boundary change thing got to be kind of a complicated conversation. And so at the end of the day, PBC said, "You know what? We're just going to leave it the same."
Yeah. To add to it conversely, on the south end, I also heard from people who said, "I don't want standards placed on my property." So it's, you've got both sides down there, so. Whoa, that was weird. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Forgot I wasn't in PowerPoint for a second. Okay. Can't just sit down. So, quality of life. Quality of life, so as I mentioned before, the initial version that you saw was very much like the Central Issaquah Plan, and it had a long background, and the process, and all sorts of stuff to condense it. We pulled this out of that, made a shorter version that sort of describes the background, kind of what Old Town is, what we'd like it to be, but it also talks about the threats that have been identified in Old Town. Threat is kind of a harsh word, but the things that people feel are detrimental to their area. So some of these include development regulations that allow a scale that might not fit the smaller scale of Old Town currently. Pass-through traffic, cut-through traffic is worse than it's ever been. Regional traffic is worse than it's been, and it slows down things on Front and Sunset. Parking is being used, the perception is that it's being used by transit commuters. Business owners think development codes are a little outdated, specifically parking and impervious surface. So, non-motorized is not prioritized over vehicular pass-through traffic. People spaces are not as usable as they should be, meaning that the task force came up with this. There's a lot of grubbery. We require pervious surfaces, and in some cases, they'll stick in a little patch with a bush, and it's not usable. So that's what they mean by some of the people places. And then maybe pedestrian park. Connection to Issaquah Creek has not been prioritized, and the loss of neighborhoods serving retail, such as, say, a grocery store. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, so before you go on, I do have a couple of comments, and I want to talk about those nine points, but I'm going to open it up to either of my colleagues. If there's any questions or comments about anything on this quality of life, which is an intro.
Yes.
But, if you have any points you wish to discuss? All right, I have a couple of them, Kristin. And it really has to do with the list of nine. And, it's interesting, the sentence that introduces the nine, "The plan update identifies those threats and provides actions." And I thought those were really strong words, threats and actions. And then, a lot of them, 1 through 9, is very passive. It doesn't really kind of align, and so this is a little bit of wordsmithing, but I just looked at the first one, and it says, "Current development regulations, both residential and CBD, allow development at a scale and character that is out of step with the neighborhood." I think we even have it in the comments, and some people feel strongly that there has been redevelopment that is out of step with the character of the neighborhood. And I think that, I mean, I'm guessing that there's a reason that that's number one, especially in the residential area, there's been redevelopment. That is, we have comments that say that doesn't feel that those fit. And I just thought a statement like that, you know, that could be made stronger to reflect, because I think what we're trying to do is, if you're going to state these as threats, and provide actions, I just thought that a statement like that could be more, could be stronger. I think it's safe to say that some of the residential redevelopment is out of step with the neighborhood's character, rather than the way it says is, "Allow development at a scale and character that is out of step."
Okay.
So, I have a couple others, I'll share these. I think on number two, I think I can simply say vehicular traffic passing through Old Town is worse than it has ever been. I think there's a lot of words without stopping, without at least an origin or destination within the area, also known as cut-through traffic, is worse than it is.
We put that in there because there was a public comment made that says, "I need to, you know, you need to define what cut-through traffic is," and the commission agreed. And because there's no definition section, we put it there.
Yeah. Okay. So, again, I thought that lead-in sentence was punchy, right? Threats and provides actions. And I think that we can, and this is an area in particular of pass-through traffic, you know, we can call that spade a spade, and not kind of water it down. I see what you tried to do, you've tried to add a definition, and it's a very technical definition. They didn't start there, and they didn't have a pause or stop there. There are trip ends all outside of Old Town, so I get that. So anyway, that would have been, that's something for consideration that I would throw out, was just to really make that shorter. Vehicular traffic passing through Old Town is worse than it's ever been.
Okay.
Moving on. Regional traffic caused by growth outside Issaquah increases congestion, and this is maybe a little semantics, it just says Front and Sunset. Of course, it's Front Street and Sunset Way. And I'm thinking about future readers, you know, that it's, you know, I think it'd just read better formally if those were better defined.
You're right, I caught that in most places, I didn't catch it there.
And then the next one, it says, "Parking in many areas, especially near transit stops, is being used by transit commuters." Okay. Sounds like a statement of fact. But I don't think that's the point. Parking in many areas, especially near transit stops, is being used by transit commuters. All right. What's the threat?
That they're staying there all day, and that businesses, there's no parking for patrons to businesses.
So, there's implication, that whatever the cause, is that there's this mixed use of transit and nearby retail, that transit users, retail customers, you know, they're competing for fewer spots, and when transit users are there all day, it has a greater impact on local retail. I just think that one, maybe as a threat, could be stated more clearly.
Okay.
And then, I have two more comments. The next one says, "Business owners believe development codes are outdated." Meaning what?
Specifically, impervious limits and parking requirements, that we still require too many spaces per square foot, that it doesn't take pedestrians into account.
For their hindrances to investment in downtown.
Right.
So, I mean, we should say that.
Okay.
I mean, Keith just said it in an interesting way, and I don't know that we all would agree with that, but he said that the development codes are a hindrance?
A hindrance.
To?
To new development.
And is that a statement that everybody would agree with?
I believe the task force would agree with that.
So, I think if you want to state it as a threat, then you, just outdated, it's just for good or for bad or for what, it's not clear to the reader.
Okay.
And then lastly, I think number six, I've just simplified it as well, it says, "Non-vehicular mobility, then parenthetically pedestrian bicycles." We could just say pedestrian bicycle mobility is not prioritized over vehicular pass-through traffic.
Agreed. Okay. All right.
I threw those out there, first time for you guys to hear them as well, I don't know if you have any comments or feedback.
Just a couple of things. I like the taking words out. Clearer is better than not clear. I agree, I think, with Paul, where you were going with the outdated building codes, because I'm not sure that everybody would agree into how we should solve that problem. And what is the real threat? It's the threat that we have an environment that doesn't support redevelopment. Or, you know, so what's the really, what's the threat to Old Town? Because, you know, how we change them will have a direct impact on what happens in Old Town going forward, so. Interesting stuff.
Okay.
Any comments, Tola?
Yeah, thank you. So, I viewed this as, these really tee up the specific actionable items that occur later. So, I'm not necessarily looking for actionability out of this. I do agree that being a little bit more clear, like, I had interpretation of what the parking in many areas, especially near transit stops, is being used by transit commuters, but I think it's probably good to spell that out a little bit more clearly, and in places where we're using broad language, to be a little bit more specific. But it'll just, I mean, the proof is going to be in the individual items that we're going to get to further in the document.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just a comment, and I think we'll get to this, but I was just going to tee it up. But, if we could, as we kind of walk through this, and we're starting to talk about the actions and the goals and the plan, tie them back to the why. So I think these are our whys. You know, why we're doing this is so we can address these threats, and then just do a tie-back to say, you know, this helps with, you know, loss of neighborhoods serving retail, for instance.
Okay.
Do you have that already, by chance?
Tied to it, in my head, because I did it today to make sure that they do, but not written anywhere.
So, it was going to be one of my asks as well, so perfect.
So like, we could easily go into the action items and put, you know, QL 1 next to 1 if it relates to number 1 here?
Are you looking for that on the policies and the action items?
I'm looking at the vision and planning framework, and where we've got, you know, community and connectivity and mobility. So, it would be interesting to say, you know, as we start talking about some of these things, how they relate back. But what I was really thinking is on the action plan, where we talk about the immediate action and the short-term actions, that we could tie that back and say, "Look, if we do this, that helps move the needle on this particular quality of life consideration."
Yeah, we can do that.
I had a similar ask, and for me, it was, much as anything, it was an audit. It was just a check. How well, you know, can we do an accounting of here, all the suggested policies in short and near and long-term actions, and how they fulfill, you know, or address the threats that we identified? I was just looking for an audit. If you want to put links in the document, I think that would be fine, but for me, it's really just completeness and an audit check.
Okay. Whoops. Sorry, moved on. So we move on to the Old Town Vision. This is much more succinct than was initially presented. I believe Land and Shore asked for bullet points instead, just to say, "Here's what it is." So, Old Town Issaquah will be a complete neighborhood where businesses are viable and provide daily services, a safe, diverse, and welcoming neighborhood, a vibrant, active regional destination comprised of small-scale traditional architecture, easily, safely, and comfortably traveled by car, bus, bicycle, or foot, comprised of distinctive, well-used gathering places and spaces, a place to connect with our environment, cultural and civic interests and historic roots, a place where views of the surrounding mountains is prominent in a historic downtown of our city. The planned framework just explains how it works. We have five elements, they align with the Central Issaquah elements as well, community, connectivity and mobility, environment, economic vitality, and housing. And then it says that this is sort of our roadmap on how to address the threats. It's our policies and our actions that will help to address those.
Just a quick comment on tying back to threats. So, what the threats are, is the barriers to achieving that vision.
Yes.
Got it.
I like that.
Well, and I'll say that the, half a page, maybe nine, eight bullets, is quite a succinct statement of the vision compared to earlier versions. And, I read this carefully a number of times, and I don't have any suggested changes. It's easy for me to identify with and, you know, agree with what's stated here. I'm sure we could wrestle with it a little bit, but I'm satisfied with the way it's stated. I don't know if anybody else, any feedback specifically on the vision statements? So, tremendous. Kudos. We really wrestled with this in earlier meetings. I think, we had them last year, too. We had a couple last year.
We did. I think we talked about it three or four times last year, and...
Yeah, yeah. I don't think David ever wants to come back and talk with us again, because...
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, first element, and you look to the left to see what it is. It's community. So just to be clear, all of these, when you do subarea plans, the goals and policies in those subarea plans are specific to that area. So we have our comprehensive plan, and in some places, you all may wonder, "Why don't we have this one?" It's in our comprehensive plan, and it's covered there. Some are really particular to this area. I know there's a solar one in here. Well, we want solar energy everywhere, but, you know, it's great here, because it's flat, and there's a lot of access to the sun, and it's a good place to really promote it, and it helps save money. Once you get that installed, it saves you a lot of money. If you're trying to stay in your home long-term, that's going to help out. So, that's really particular to this area. So, starting with community, place-making. Create inviting, identifiable, and desirably aesthetic civic and cultural gathering places that inspire community engagement. Now Paul, I don't know if you want to go through every policy, or if you want to look at the goals and then just skim over?
You know, I think, I don't think we need to read that. I've heard from both Chris and Tola that they've read these as well. So I think, so let's just kind of go through a goal, the statement that you have, and do a little check-in. Any kind of comments or questions regarding Goal A? And then we'll talk about the policy proposals next.
I'll just say that, I get a little confused sometimes on when documents are intended to be used electronically versus in paper form. It would be very nice to be able to link to some of those things. You know, as I was in there, I'm like, "Oh yeah, the treasures." Like, I haven't looked at that list in a while. And, you know, it's, okay, it's Comp Plan Volume 2, land use of Penex 1, okay, but, you know, I don't know, we have not historically designed our documents to have HTML embeds in them, right? But this document will certainly, I mean, this document is virtually ready to go right now up on a website, right?
Yeah, that's where it's going to go.
So those links, even when you put them up there, it'd be great to have those links embedded correctly.
Okay.
Which means you have to develop a staple schema for where stuff is located. I'm not sure you guys have that.
That's why we have a communications department, they'll help us figure that out.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, so the statement of place-masing itself, any comments, questions? Regarding the eight, what are those called? Policies?
Policies. So the goals are on the left, policies are on the right.
I had one. The last one, it says, "Facilitate active use of sidewalks by area businesses." Now, isn't that part of the streetscape plan?
It's not. I don't know.
Well, it is.
Or is it, did it get, I can't remember if it was included in there.
So you guys, okay.
So, we have, like, many things in our community, we have gradations of facilitation. In the Highlands and in Rowley, we adopted a code for active use of the public right-of-way, the sidewalk area, for cafe tables and things like that. It's allowed basically by right. In Old Town, it's still done by special use permit, and so it's a harder process to actually get those things to happen in Old Town than it is in other parts of the city. And so I think what we were envisioning here was expanding the section of code, and I think it might be IMC 1205, to include Old Town in that area where we'll basically allow you to take your tables and chairs and put them out on the sidewalk.
That's exactly what we were envisioning, yes.
So, okay. So, you know, down in immediate actions, with number 16, it says, "Code revisions to expand the sidewalk use district, IMC 1205."
Look at that.
And if that immediate action is the action associated with a policy statement like that.
Right.
My only recommendation then would be just to maybe clarify that policy statement a little bit.
Okay.
Because there are elements of the streetscape plan where about activating places on the sidewalk.
Right.
I thought you were referring to that, but you're saying explicitly, "No."
Correct.
It's this sidewalk use district, which is a different animal.
It is.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
So that's my only comment about the policies for that section.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. Let's go on to Goal B.
So Goal B has to do with the Green Necklace. Continue the Green Necklace through Old Town by way of a concentrated and connected park, green space, and non-motorized system. This would include things, the plan was just adopted, and it includes things like Front Street, Cora Park, Front Street Park, the, you know, Issaquah Creek corridor that would expand down here.
Any comments, questions? I love seeing this in here. I think the Green Necklace isn't owned by any subarea at all, right? It is really a citywide amenity, so I like to see it called out here.
Good.
Peter's smiling.
I know. We were hoping it would go that way.
Good.
All right. So, policies or Goal C?
C.
Okay. Traditional building character, maintain the traditional character and scale of the cultural and business. Yeah, I know, I need to say district. And Sunset Neighborhoods, while allowing these areas to grow and evolve. Now, this gets applied to housing later. That's been asked before, "Why wasn't housing included?" That comes later.
Any comments? Any comments, questions?
So.
Go ahead, Tola.
So this had, there was a lot of citizen data on this subject, right? So are we talking about creating potentially a, you know, there's five styles, you've got to permit your house under one of these three, five, seven, whatever it is, styles, and there'll be specific permitting rules associated with each of those styles?
So that's one of the action items, and so yes, we'll talk about that when we get there, and you guys will need to decide if you're comfortable with that.
But, you know, the.
I'm going to watch my comments because we're on TV. So you can drive through Old Town and the neighborhoods, and you can see some recent developments that I think some folks who live in these neighborhoods would say don't belong. They're too big, the architecture's too new. There's comments that we've, that came out during this two-year process. And so that led us to this action item potentially of adopting, as Kristin mentioned earlier, residential design standards for Old Town, which right now, the design standards for Old Town are limited to CBD, right?
CBD, multifamily high, on here, and a little bit of multifamily.
So this would expand, right now, the architectural umbrella within this sub-area to include basically every property.
I don't think that's what this says. I don't think that.
Yeah, this policy does not. This one doesn't, no. The one in housing does.
Oh, how, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. Well, he opened the door.
I mean, how would you enforce this if not, but?
Well, we have design standards, and they may not be strong enough if we're not getting what we want. There hasn't been a whole lot of development on Front Street, though, but they're, you know, and then, yeah, design standards.
But they don't enforce traditional character, do they?
They do, to some extent. The windows have to be at a certain level, and you have to have awnings and the signs and colors.
Dominoes had to repaint because they didn't meet the color palette.
In the CBD, in the cultural business.
Right. I think they're not quite, they're not quite as tight and Main Street-ish on Sunset as they are in Front Street.
They're super loose compared to what we just adopted in Central.
Right.
I sense what Tola was getting to is, is this everything? No, I read this, it's CBD and it's along East Sunset. That's all that this addresses.
That's this one.
That's right. Okay, Chris?
And then, just for my own clarification, so the policy statements are directional in nature, and then it's actually the action items, we get into them, where we actually are going to be taking the steps to implement these policies.
To put it in code.
Yeah. So there's still work to be done. So this is, from a directional policy perspective, this is where we want to go, then we get to the action item, then we'll say, okay, and this is how we're going to make that happen.
And when?
And when.
So we, yeah, we put them into three time frames.
So if there's a need or desire to crank those down and make them more specific or whatever, that comes as part of the action steps that we've identified.
Right.
Got it.
And it gets narrowed down even more once you start going through the amendments.
And before we move on, this is where I tagged a policy, in this case, 1.11, that seemed to address threat number one. And so this is where I started, but I did not exhaustively try to do a mapping between these policies and the threats, but just, and again, Kristin, I'm not sure this, I'm asking for that to be in this document. I think maybe some kind of, something that we could just look at as kind of a check for ourselves. I don't know, maybe it will make sense to be in there, but that's what I was, that's how I was trying to connect it.
Okay.
So actually, we'd go further in that, and I would like to see, this relates to something that I've referred to in other meetings as an effectiveness matrix. You don't have to make it a matrix, but if you're going to have sort of philosophical statements, I think it's good to say, how do the philosophical statements tie to the specifics?
How would you ever measure success, right? It's connecting the actual action back with the vision piece. Yes.
No, I mean, the plan layout is really good. I mean, it's like, here's what we want to do, here's the barriers we see to it, here's our directional things, and here's how we're going to do it. And if you can, you know, connect the dots, you know, the roadmap through those things, it really is like, okay, I understand now why we're going to do this. And by contrast, if there's something that we have on our list of tasks to do that doesn't support any of these things, then we say, well, maybe we don't need to do that. So, what did you call it?
Well, engineering, it's an effectiveness matrix.
I can't say that.
But you don't have to make a matrix out of it.
But some sort of a roadmap that connects those dots would be really helpful.
Some linkage.
But it also helps you then reverse engineer. If you've got an action and you're like, this was, this came up all the time, but you can't track it back to a policy or a goal, then, you know, that would be a good reason to say, well, maybe we're missing a policy and a goal, right?
Or maybe we have an action we don't need to do.
Or that.
Okay, Christine, go ahead on to C, or excuse me, D.
Neighborhood ownership, engage Old Town residents and business owners in the implementation of this neighborhood plan. You know, we get these big council meetings, and they're great, but it'd be nice and easier probably for public to say, you know, we haven't addressed this, if it's on a smaller scale and on a regular basis.
And this one had a lot to do with, you know, we have certain neighborhoods that are very organized and have strong HOAs, and that's not the case in Old Town. And so this one was kind of trying to broach that subject of could the city serve as just facilitator, of holding neighborhood meetings occasionally to allow people to get together and talk about certain issues. So that's where this one kind of came from.
Great, thank you. I have no comments.
Okay.
I particularly like this one. I think more engagement is always better than less engagement, and as we go through this process, and it becomes an evolving and continually refining itself process, the more touches we have with the public, the better we will do.
Great. Okay.
All right, on to connectivity and mobility.
Connectivity and mobility. We want a balanced transportation network to support the placemaking vision and character of Old Town by developing a safe, efficient, and effective multimodal transportation network that prioritizes pedestrians and bicyclists.
So let me address something that is, I think we don't talk about very often, we probably should. Right now, the trolley doesn't facilitate mobility. It's nice, I'm glad we have it. It needs to do more if it's going to be a mobility solution. Do we have any thoughts or potential to do anything more with the trolley? Because honestly, at the moment, as nice as it is, it's a dis-mobility option in that it doesn't actually move anyone from anywhere to anywhere, and it slows down traffic on Front Street.
Yes.
Yes to which.
Yes, it does those things.
Or doesn't.
So the problem, the problem is where the trolley line stops, where the rail line stops at Gilman, which is right at the Chamber offices. That was for you, Kathy.
Doesn't go that far.
Yeah, it goes that far. Because they wanted to put a station there, actually.
It goes past the little bridge.
It goes all the way to Gilman, basically.
Gilman.
Yeah. It stops at Three Trails. So, you know, so the problem is, you know, they would love, I think, I think we all would love if it went to the state park. I mean, that would be awesome. But we've pulled up our rails, rail lines, in the King County Trail, and so it's a, it would be a significant city infrastructure project to do that. Could you do that? Yeah. If there was enough interest, but you'd have to find a corridor and then lay track.
So what does that do?
I'm not sure that trolley is probably the answer to our mobility question. So, I mean, I think that the trolley is charming, and it pits the character of Old Town, and I think it's a really nice tourist destination. I don't think it's part of our transportation solution.
And I don't think we necessarily disagree. So is it in 2.5?
Is it in 2.5?
It is in 2.5.
Oh, wow.
Hence my question.
I thought we just had the picture. I thought we had the words.
We had long discussions about this one, but.
What was the nature of the long discussions about the trolley?
Whether or not it should be in there, whether or not it will eventually actually be a mobility option.
If you skip trolley, so the shopping shuttle, so there are some things that have been done that actually facilitate mobility in Old Town, like the partnership that Dia had with the Highlands, with Regency Plaza to run a shuttle, and to, they go to Gilman Village, too. So that piece, I think, is valid. The trolley, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not wed to that.
No.
Hearing the council kind of say, think about that one a little bit more, and maybe it.
Oh, I feel stronger than that.
Okay.
I agree with Tola, and Tola, what he said, how he characterized it, what it is and what it isn't. It is, it seems, it was kind of cute to see it mentioned here as a balanced, in our balanced transportation network, but I know today, it doesn't facilitate, and there is no plan, there's nothing in a capital plan, there's nothing in a long-range vision at all for that trolley to be anything more than it is right now.
Right.
And so until that exists, I don't know that, well, I guess you could, you know, that would be very aspirational for this document. I just don't see any, that existing anywhere else.
So like Keith, I'm not wed to it, so if it's something you want to see come out?
You guys think?
I'll go back and say it. I think it's cute, I think it's a great tourist destination. It's not part of our mobility plan, and I think there's far better ways for us to, if we're going to invest in mobility, than investing further in the trolley for mobility. I mean, I love it, but not for mobility.
I mean, one could envision things that you could do to make it part of mobility, right? If it had, if it was long enough that, you know, you had to stop at either end, and it ran from 10:00 AM till 6:00 PM, and there was a little sign that said, the trolley will be here, and it counted down the number of minutes till the trolley was going to be there, and you could imagine people getting on at one end after doing stuff at Gilman Village, and getting off at the other end because they're parked downtown or whatever. But, I mean, it's not set up to do that currently, right?
Right.
And that represents a substantial change. Somebody would have to have the assumption to propose a slew of things to do, right, to make it part of a mobility option.
Right. Would you, I suggest we have them take it out.
I don't think it blocks.
There's concurrence.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that?
I had no other comment about Goal E or its policies.
Okay.
We can move on.
Okay. Goal F, invest in improvements to manage both regional and local traffic.
So like 2.7, so the part of this, again, we wrote this like two years ago. So 2.7, I think, has happened, right? We did the traffic calming program in Old Town. It went, it was a pilot, and then it turned into permanent improvements.
You know, in the implementations sections, we can have already-done lists, not.
Yeah, well, yes.
I think there's a number of other areas within Old Town that would probably, that would probably jump on the chance to be the next, Darst being perhaps the most prominent.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So it's, a pilot's been done, but it hasn't been done throughout the district.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So I have a question around, does this, it's not that it doesn't preclude, if we want to have a question later, if we want to have a conversation later about things, sort of large-scale things like congestion fees, is this, how would something like that, if we want to have a conversation later about congestion fees, does this language support having that?
I think 2.8 does.
Yeah, 2.1, yeah. Because, you know, this is just, this is just your policy. How you get there can be fiddled with and talked about and addressed in different ways.
Because I want to make sure it's broad enough to include some potentially big public policy.
Yeah.
Ideas around this.
Okay.
Not that I'm necessarily ready to make any such proposal, but.
It could be coming.
Could be. He's discussion, yeah, sorry.
Just a quick one. On 2.7, I think, given the fact that we've been overtaken by events, we could probably strike the first part of that sentence that says revisit neighborhood traffic calming strategies, and just start with implement improvements that discourage cut-through traffic. Because I think that will speak to additional work that could happen in Old Town where we've done it, as well as to look at improvement opportunities in other parts of Old Town where we haven't actually done that yet.
So the problem is in Darst, it's not necessarily cut-through traffic. It's calming of traffic that is going to the school, which is immediately adjacent to the Darst neighborhood. So it's not, it's not really cut-through.
Might be two separate policies. One around traffic calming and one around discouraging cut-through. Just think about that.
I think, I think traffic calming works for both applications. Traffic calming is traffic calming, and, so I'm not agreeing that we needed something, traffic calming and something else for cut-through. Part of the calming that's done over here is actually, also does address cut-through of South of Sunset.
But I think there are things, well, I guess it's a definition of what traffic calming is. I think there's things we can do to calm traffic that won't discourage cut-through, and there are things we can do for, that'll discourage cut-through that aren't traffic calming, if I read, if I use my definition of traffic calming, which is to get people to slow down. So that's my only reason for suggesting maybe it's two, and I'll leave it up to you guys to think about how you want to address that.
So traffic calming is really weird, right? Because the public told us they don't care. Like, the public said, there's no problem with speeding in the city. We know that there are specific neighborhoods for which we violently disagree with that statement, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, you asked the public, and they said, there's no speeding. It's 2% or 3%, or some tiny little number, right? So calming is not the problem, right? We are too calmed. We are becalmed. Sunset was becalmed this afternoon. You could go selling flowers to all the cars as they sat waiting to move along Sunset, right?
Yep.
So the whole calming thing, it was an eye-opener to me how specific that concern with traffic calming is, because how not shared it was by 98% or 97% of the community, right?
Yep.
I don't know what that means towards Chris's suggestion about, it's two separate things, but to, it's not, it's not a broad problem, and we as a council have been talking about it as a broad problem. I think it's just a very, very specific problem in a couple neighborhoods, and in both cases that we've had so far, it relates to high school students, right?
Yeah.
Depends on how you find neighborhoods. I know that there are some significant speed problems in the Highlands.
But what I'm saying is that the data doesn't show it, right? So you're going to see data later in this document that says amongst the issues that people have with transportation in the city, speeding is a small, single-digit number. I don't disagree with you. I have pulled over numerous times on parked drive on my motorcycle because someone was tailgating me, and I have a policy of not, of not letting people tailgate me when I'm on a motorcycle. So I don't disagree with you, but to the public, the numbers are not there.
That's interesting, because I don't think that might just conflict with the information we got on Monday from the police department, so, anyway.
Okay, so this, let's wrap up this Goal F. 2.7 has to do, I think, I would ask staff to consider Chris's comments about, you know, is cut-through and calming, should it be stated as two separate policy? And I think that was your request, right? And so I would, I would ask you to take that into consideration and come back with a recommendation.
Okay.
Regarding number 2.8, a little bit about, I realize that this is policy, but the way it's written, it, boy, it says, okay, go it alone. It's develop and apply solutions. And I realize how you would implement, how to do this would come later in your, in your action steps, but I just, I felt that this language, I think even at the policy level, we should be acknowledging that, you know, our policy should be able to, should be working with the regional partners on this.
Through regional partnerships can.
So, but this is another one where you can check at least one of the boxes that we've already done this, right? Truck traffic.
Okay, okay, sure.
And that was local, and I think what you could say is that made a big difference on Front and Sunset.
True.
So, but to your point, many, almost all the other solutions, unless, unless we do what Tola alluded to earlier, we have, there's some dramatic ones locally we could implement. implement, but all the other ones are partnering with King County and potentially DOT.
Yes, and so, so my ask is that at the policy level, we do charge ourselves to work with regional partners.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure what that language is. I know that this language is absent any, any direction to work with regional partners. I don't know if that's just an oversight or if it's intentional, but somehow I think that needs to be fit in there.
I don't know.
And at the same time, I do recognize Keith's point is a valid one about the truck routes.
Right.
There are some things, well, maybe there, that was the one thing, I don't know, that we could do completely on our own. But we, we, there are many factors, many of them external, many of them long-term in nature, and we ourselves, you know, can affect change to those.
So in, in my mind, you know, solutions would include regional partnerships, but I guess the question is, if you feel like it wants to be called out because it wants that attention, we could put solutions including working with regional partners, or it could be its own policy. And I don't know if you have a preference one way or the other.
At this point, I'll, I'll let you guys bat that around. I feel that at the policy level, I think we should mention this.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
It would be consistent with the regional agenda that we have, which has a big part of transportation and mobility in it anyway.
Right. Goal G.
Okay, that was it on Goal F.
Okay, Goal G. Parking, improve parking availability for businesses, visitors, and residents. And I need to point out 2.9. So 2.9 kind of goes to what you all were talking about before. A phrase was added in here that says, "By reducing the abusive use of free parking." And it's now been proposed that we reword this to make it a little broader. And as Paul, I think you mentioned earlier, where's the, it was almost a where's the proof kind of thing, show me the numbers. So we are going through a parking study, right, and a parking analysis right now, as you know, that will hopefully come up with some solutions if they are needed to help us with this. So we are proposing a more broad policy here. Employ comprehensive parking management strategies that ensure on-street and public parking is efficiently and effectively utilized to meet various needs in Issaquah.
Well, thank you. I like that a lot better than criminalizing people using parking, which the first phrase does, abusive use. It's very judgmental and yet it's only anecdotal.
Right.
And, and this seems to address that.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Excellent.
And then 2.10, I have a comment for this if I can find it. Update parking requirements for new development. Toward what goal? What's, this is, that's a policy that says update something for the sake of updating it.
That is a policy that says the task force wanted to adopt the Central Issaquah parking standards so that development could more easily occur in the CBD, because they feel that the parking standards are, that we require too much there and it's inhibiting development there. And that's specifically what that speaks to.
So, act hindering. So back, so 210, and actually 210 took on a bit of a different end as well, through recent conversations relating to formula businesses.
Yes.
So I think we need to kind of maybe unpack 210 a little bit more. I think what we talked about is, is making sure that the parking standards in Old Town aren't more encumbering than the rest of the city, because if it's good enough for the rest of the city, why isn't it not good enough for Old Town? Right now, the parking...
If you're concerned about any policy that we have about anything in the whole city, why, let's just not have an Old Town sub-area plan, because if it's good enough for the rest of the city, it should be good enough for Old Town.
Well, so, I, I mean, if, if, so, okay, I'm not sure I said exactly that, but what I would say is, so, so there was an ask from the task force that, you know, if, if we think that a restaurant generates three parking stalls per thousand in, in, on Gilman, why does a restaurant on, on Front Street, you know, produce four per thousand? So I mean, that was part of this. I think the other piece, and this is one that I'm sure we're going to end up talking about a lot, is, you know, there, there is, and I don't know where that is in here, Kristin, because my brain's just not going to track on that right now.
The neighborhood.
As I brought the, like, C game.
The neighborhood ones.
The one about incentive...
The neighborhood incentive for, yeah, that's in the actions. And I was going to bring that up.
And so, so what we talked about is, you know, as we had two of our Old Town businesses transition into different businesses, and, and that was Staples and Front Street Market, we kind of threw out a conversation at PPC about, well, does that matter? Does it matter if our local businesses are getting replaced by, by chains? And does that impact Old Town? And it was, it was an interesting conversation. The chamber weighed in on it, Economic Vitality Commission weighed in on it. And at the end of the day, we didn't, we didn't say, you know, ban franchise businesses. We could have, as a recommendation. What we said is maybe offer development incentives to local businesses. So in other words, if I'm, if I'm a local business and I, and I, maybe I can't afford the same rent as a, as a national chain, maybe the parking requirements are less. But we didn't spell out those, and I don't want to call them incentives, because that kind of freaks people out. I think we used some better words. But it was, it was looking for ways to encourage kind of more local businesses in Old Town than regional. And so this could be wrapped into this one as well, because that's one of the things we have to offer that doesn't necessarily cost anything, because we have a lot of reparking, as we said earlier, in Old Town. And if you could say, well, okay, maybe I have to walk a couple blocks, but we don't have to make a restaurant bind an extra two parking spaces, because there isn't any there for it, but now we get an extra restaurant downtown, maybe that's a good trade-off. So I'm just giving you guys background. Eventually, we get to an action item that might be a better conversation point, but that all might want to feed into changing the way this is worded right now.
Okay. A comment and a question. My comment, actually, I think is a summary of what I've heard. Our understanding of parking has evolved and it's, the most current thinking is reflected in standards elsewhere in the city. And the task force had a recommendation that said, "Can we update the requirements in Old Town to match this more current thinking?" You're nodding your head.
That, that's correct. Yes.
It sounds, in the example that Keith gave, and this would be my question, that if that's, maybe not, I was about to say, well, it sounds like maybe that updated thinking may exasperate a parking problem.
If we have a parking problem.
Good answer. Okay. I mean, I, I said, "Might update a parking, uh, it might exasperate a parking problem."
Right.
If we have a problem.
Right.
Okay. Well, I would want to be clear on that. Okay, well, you, I am now. You answered that question. So that was my, I think 210 can be reworded for clarity.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll just add, it, it doesn't seem unusual at all that you might have different standards in Old Town. You know, you say, "Why would you allow a different amount of parking?" Because of Goal E, right? Because of balanced transportation network and trying to prioritize pedestrians and bicyclists, right? And if, not that we're ever going to do this, but if you just, you know, if you shut down, if every street in Old Town was pedestrian plaza and we put up a thousand-stall parking lot on the outside edge of the property and said, "Everybody's welcome to park there or take a bus from wherever," you know, you would have, you would have no parking. I mean, we're not going to do that, but as it's currently set up, Goal E would tell me that you probably expect to see fewer drivers for, if you have a comparable-sized business in Old Town and, and the same size building outside Old Town, you probably expect to see more parking outside of Town.
Yes. I, you know, I think, you know, so take it this way, because, and maybe this is what you were saying, Tola, maybe a little bit different, but like, I mean, if part of our goal is to keep local businesses in Old Town, and, and we haven't even talked about that yet, so I'm going to assume that maybe you guys agree with that, those businesses then cater to also the neighborhoods that are around Old Town. So they're walking destinations to people that live in the Old Town neighborhood, right? And so, you know, if, if part of my clientele is getting there by foot or by bicycle, then in theory, yes, I should have to have less parking spaces than Gilman, which everybody's driving to.
Yes. We agree.
I have a question for you that I, really unfair one, but I'm asking anyway. So what are the current parking requirements in Old Town? And how do they compare to the current, the new parking requirements in, say, Central Issaquah?
So that's, that's a complicated question. I think they're higher in general. So, so the parking standards from Old Town are from 1999-ish, when basically the whole focus was you have to have the minimum number of parking spaces or it's not going to work. And if you want three times that many, that's fine. In, in Central, you know, we've pivoted to say, you know, too much parking is actually a problem for our community. If we're, if we're paving over half our city for convenience, maybe that's not the right answer. And so, so there's now a minimum, a maximum in Old Town, I mean, in Central. And those, that maximum is probably close to the minimum in Old Town, would be my guess, without going and doing a look.
So it might be interesting to say, "Update the parking requirements to reflect a balanced transportation network in Old Town." Or reflect the requirements or the needs or, or something like that. But I, I like Tola's point that referring back to Goal E about a balanced transportation network is at the heart of this.
Right.
And so I think, you know, it's, it's a, it's a twofer. One is it's to make development, redevelopment more viable, but it's also to have a parking requirements that are consistent with our transportation network.
I have a question since we're talking about parking, just real briefly. So I go some places and I pull into a parking stall and it's great. And I go other places and, and there'll be compact spots and there'll be regular spots. And I'll go someplace else and there'll be compact spots and there'll be regular spots. And I'll pull into a regular spot and my car will be centered in its lane, and the next car will be centered in its lane, the car on the other side will be centered in its lane. I can't open my freaking door. So how have standards evolved about parking lots in Issaquah? And is that something that you get any, am I the only person who, for, I mean, I have giant doors.
You do, you have two-door, like I do.
Right.
So, so I was going to ask you, is this an Issaquah thing or is this regional? I mean, I don't know if our parking stall sizes have changed.
Not in Issaquah, outside of the villages, no.
Is Germaine to this? I believe it is.
So, so here's the deal. In theory, I don't think we have different stall widths. That's widths. We're talking widths, I think, at this point.
Yes.
Now, what happens is when your parking lot gets old and you kind of surface coat it and then you re-stripe it, do you squeeze another parking space in? You know, we don't ever go back and look, frankly. We, it just doesn't happen, you know? And so I don't know that there isn't just a grassroots modification that might have happened if you pulled into a parking lot and had that issue. So I don't know.
So I'm going to answer Paul's question on, is this Germaine or not? Because I think that my concern really revolves around, as we look at parking requirements, I don't want to see people playing games with five-foot-wide car stalls.
Right.
So they get more spots, only there aren't because humans can't park there. Because I have seen a lot of places nowadays where cars just, you'll get every other spot parking, because you literally cannot fit a car into the stalls as designed.
Right. So I think what we're talking about is numbers and not sizes.
Yes.
In terms of changes, and so...
So I just want to plant the bug in your ear that if that's something, I don't know what the language currently is, but I just want, I would love to see some language that makes sure there's an, there isn't an unintended consequence and us getting posted stamp-sized parking stalls. And it's width, yes, not size.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Kristin, do you have any questions for us?
Not yet. No?
Are we ready to move on? Please. Thank you.
Environment. There we go. Natural environment and reach Old Town by retaining and enhancing connections both visual and physical to the natural environment.
I had one comment about 3.1. It's a wordsmithing one. Living well walls and landscape walls that blend with the surrounding forest and hillside. When I first read it, I thought, I didn't like the word blend. It's simply a wordsmithing, because it almost sound, it's almost like there's physical contact. I think you're striving for something that's in harmony with our surroundings, right? I'll just throw that out for your consideration. It's just, to me, we're, we're seeking some type of harmony. Land architecturally sounded to me like intended something different. It's a small little net, Kristin.
Okay.
And then in 3.2, I wasn't sure what that was calling for. Says, "Use limited building heights to preserve views." What is this calling for?
So essentially, right now, we use step backs to help preserve, the intent of that is to help preserve views on Front Street of the Alps. If you go, if, if you want to go over a certain height, you want to go over the base height, that's what's required. So essentially, this is saying, we're going to use lower heights, it comes up later. Use lower heights to preserve the views, as opposed to the step backs. That way, you get the smaller character and you preserve the views all the way across that level.
So as a matter of structure, so this, this is actually a proposal to change an existing policy.
Right.
Code.
Right. Existing standard.
It's made its all its way to code. So do we need to say that? Or, or maybe that just is somewhere else later on in further implementation that, by the way we want to, we, we, this, this is, this is, these are goals and these are our policies around these goals, but administratively, at the same time, I think administrations recommending that we're going to, we're actually going to change some code that...
Right.
Is, had a different policy basis than this one.
Right. And it, and it, I think if you start to say, "By doing this," it gets rather specific and regulatory, so just saying to use the lower heights.
Yeah, and so I was missing what this, what is it, why are, why are you saying this?
Okay.
And, and, and I, so, now, I've learned through this conversation is that this is a, a statement of a different policy that, for the same objective of preserving views. And that's what it says. It does say to preserve views, but, but, okay. Use limited building heights to preserve views. Okay, I'm, I'm not sure that there's any change to make there now that I understand it, but it might be confusing to anybody else who doesn't, who may be reading this.
Okay.
I have a question about this. So, limited building heights. So a couple of specific things on Front Street. There are some businesses that are sort of two and a half stories, right? There is a Western, a traditional Western architecture, right?
False front.
That has a false front.
Yes.
Yeah. So how does that, how does that get addressed?
So right now, so right now, if, if we're kind of jumping into the action items, which is fine, we can kind of do that. It helps maybe this make a little bit more sense, or not. So right now, the recommendation that's coming forward is to, you could build on Front Street right now to, is it 60?
Four, 65 feet max, 45-foot base.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, it's basically four stories base and five, a tall five for max. And the recommendation is, I think the analysis or the feeling that came out of the conversations was that's too high, pull it down a story. Was it just one story?
It's one story.
So, yeah, so take it down to three stories. So, so your two and a half-story Western false front is what kind of that maximum height, I think, that, that the community was thinking made sense for Front Street.
And the second part of this question is, we have some sort of what I think of as monument buildings. And I'm thinking specifically of the library here, right?
Yeah.
How tall is the library? And, you know, that's a, it's a sort of beautiful piece of architecture, right?
Yes.
So I don't think anybody would, would, would suggest the library shave some bit of height off the top of it, but it's, it's pretty tall, right?
I don't know how tall it is. Do you remember?
I'll let you know in a second.
You don't have to answer that question right in a second, but...
Village Theater is 65. In the back, the Village Theater is 65.
Village Theater is the tallest building we have.
Right. So I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering philosophically, right?
Yeah, no.
Somebody came back later and said, I don't know, I can't think of off the top of my head another good use, but a building that would be sort of a marquee, not marquee monument, I don't know the right words.
Landmark.
Yeah, but something that was a, sort of a destination. And, you know, it, it was more than three stories and had, or it had some design elements that were taller. Whether this would preclude that and if that's what, if that's what we, for sure that's what we wanted. So I wanted to use the library as a test case.
Yes.
You tell me, oh no, the library would be fine in this new, this new system.
They didn't have to use step backs.
I think it's a tall two, but let me.
Right, but, but the theater would not be, is what you're telling me.
The theater would not be. The theater would now be non, the theater would now be non-conforming with the code amendment.
Does this cause them problems down the road with renovations and whatnots?
Not with renovations, as long as it's kind of keeping the same footprint. Okay.
He's looking something up, is there?
Your library building is, I bet it's close to three. It is close to three. I like that for accuracy. We can probably actually give you that, we can be clear on that. If we're coming back, we can, we can get that number.
I mean, I'm not asking out of trivia. I'm asking, are there situations that there are buildings that we would want to see downtown?
Right.
That wouldn't meet the proposed standard?
Right.
And if, if the answer is no, there aren't, then that's fine. I just want to make sure, because that's, that's a building that I think we all like, right?
It is a building we all like, as I've heard.
Okay, so but from a policy level, 3.2 says, we're going to switch to building height, no longer use step backs.
Right.
To achieve their objective of preserving views. Are there any other questions or comments about policies in Goal H?
No.
Okay, let's move on to Goal I.
Okay, protect and contribute to the enhancement of Old Town's natural amenities through sustainable practices.
I had no comments.
I have none.
Encourage public and private investment in solar energy. How does, what does that look like? That's just got to be incentives, right?
Well, it could be either incentives through green building and, you know, any codes that are done. But also, you know, we have the solar, the private people who are coming in here right now and encouraging the solar, it's the partnership that we have. I don't know what it's called.
It's called Solarize Issaquah.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go, Solarize Issaquah.
It's aspirational.
I'm just trying to see how it maps to a policy that we would ever have.
Well, we have our whole green building.
Yeah, action strategies. It's going to be in line with that. The question is, is it, are we going to, is there actually advantages that we can find to?
Yeah, and you know, if people, I know, I know it's an upfront cost, but I see it as helping to people to be able to stay in their places because once you get that set up, the utility costs are virtually nothing. So it makes it easier for longevity in there.
Capital get in. Okay, any other questions?
Just, just a thought. So are, do we have some activities that are aligned to this policy statement?
Yes. The develop an opportunity for an Old Town community garden.
I was thinking more on 3.6.
Action step.
That is an action step. There's an action step in there.
It's the same as the policy statement.
I was reading the, I was saying the lines to that one, but it is almost the exact same as the policy, yes.
No, I was thinking more on the, the solar access in, in Old Town since that was a question that came up, is do we, do we have something that we're actually doing to try and implement that policy?
So not that, not that I see for that one, but we do for the other two.
Okay.
We're going to get to that too, but I know our green building action strategy, within it, one of the ways to implement this is it says to reference that and require its use in our sub-area plans. So this is our chance to do that later on.
Yeah, so this, this policy is probably broader than just Old Town.
It is, but like I said earlier too, it's, it's a great place to have it.
Yep.
You've got great access to the, to the sun here, so, without shade.
Five days a year.
Pardon me?
Okay. So we can move on. We can move on to G, parking?
Whoop, you mean, we did G parking.
Sorry, I, I scrolled back to the wrong.
Want to go to J?
My bad, J, sorry.
Okay, so now we're onto economic vitality. Keith, business retention and attraction promote Old Town as a vibrant neighborhood business opportunity.
Mike, I have a comment about Policy 4.4. It does say, small-scale local businesses. I like what Keith said earlier this evening when he just said, some type of incentive for local business. I, I don't know that we need the qualifier, small scale.
Okay.
On 4.2, what is pop-up? What are we really talking about there?
So, you know, it's like, so what we talked about, like in pedestrian park, is to allow for a pop-up to happen there. So you bring in, you could bring in like a container that somebody sets up a shop in and they operate it for, you know, a set period of time and then it's gone. And so it's, it's taking opportunity space in places to create business opportunities that don't otherwise exist.
And I think that can also be done in, in like, say, spaces that aren't being leased at that time. Maybe they get six weeks to go in and, and try out a business.
Like the cupcake place is empty, you know? Could you work with the landlord to, you know, get a temporary retailer in there? Something like that, great.
Did we consider and have we talked to local business community about just taking the big step and just banning either chains or, or non-locally owned businesses?
It, it, so we did open that door. There definitely, there was, you know, it's, it's a hard, I don't know that anybody was ready to take that step. We talked about that with PPC, that's the franchise business thing. We talked about it with PPC for at least on two occasions, I think.
And got lots of, lots of public comment.
Kind of walked away from it, so.
Because?
This, this is what the resulting policy was, which, the 4.4.
Well, that's a different, no, that's answering a different question than I asked, forgive me.
Right.
PPC may have had an opinion on what we should or shouldn't do. My question was what the public thought about the idea. And by public, I mean both residents and local businesses.
We got comment from both the chamber.
And Dia.
And Dia, and I believe both were opposed to the idea.
They were opposed.
Yes, they were opposed.
Yeah. It was, it was at best a mixed bag. You know, we definitely heard some that, yeah, we should ban them, but it was, it was not, there was no consensus or even majority, I think.
No, it's super helpful that their position was to be opposed to it. Thank you, that answered my question.
Any other comments about Goal J, business retention and attraction? Its policies? Okay, let's move on to K, arts and culture hub.
Promote Old Town as the community's arts and cultural center for residents, the business community, and visitors.
I have a number of comments about this. Some of it may just be a wordsmithing. It is interesting how the Arts Commission shows up in the middle of a list of nonprofit agencies, whereas that is a city entity, the Arts Commission. It just felt like that was a little bit out of place. The, and then later on in that list, you specifically mention, and I know these are examples, such as, it does say Village Theater calls that out. And then later on in 4.6, it just says, support Village Theater. But Village Theater represents the performing arts and I think that there is a, a, a strong and emerging, it's been here for a while. If you think of Art East, you know, there's visual arts as well. So I would, I would ask that, is such as list either add Art East or you add some type of phrase that says the visual and performing and visual arts? Something to that effect to capture what's already here. Then in that same paragraph, sentence, it does, again, Issaquah History Museum, it's a minimum thing, a museum is plural, it's actually Issaquah History Museum.
Oh, it is, isn't it, yeah, okay.
And then I do, I do, I just, what about 4.6? It just says, support them.
It looks a little redundant to me because we're supporting them in 4.5.
Does this mean something different than what 4, the such as list in 4.5?
No.
No.
And Theater ER is different or the same as Theater RE?
Oh, it is spelled both ways. So are you suggesting that we just, that we just delete 4.6?
Well, I, it was a question if you were proposing it to intend to be something different.
No, I think it can be done.
Applied.
I, I think it can be done. And, and I like the idea of adding visual and performing arts somewhere up in the policy above it.
Okay.
And then deleting the part about, about the Village Theater.
So why is 4.6 here? Is there something, I mean, first of all, I do think Village Theater is special for a couple, for a couple reasons. Is there some reason that we have it called out as a policy, very vague policy support?
I can't remember, it was longer before. It, it was a longer policy and then it got, I can't remember why it stayed. So obviously, it's not a really strong reason.
So, so, I mean, so one, I think, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and do this on TV, so sorry for everybody. I, I think the Village Theater does have a prominence, maybe above a lot of the other ones because of the number of people it brings to downtown. And so it is, it, maybe does it deserve its own line? I don't know. I mean, I think to the point that you guys were addressing in 4.5, the hard thing with a list, even though you use such as, it's like, okay, but how many are not on that list that are like, why wasn't I on that list? Because, you know, kaleidoscope music would love to be on that list.
Right, and that's why performing.
And so, you know, so the question is, 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 or does 4.5 want to be somehow restructured to not have the list? And then, and then maybe you leave Village Theater as its own little marquee if it's not now listed as part of a list, a partial list within 4.5? I don't know. I, I think you guys have brought up kind of a structural issue here that isn't as baked as maybe it should be. So I'm not sure what the answer is because I brought my CD.
Well, I have some ideas, so if you want us to rework that and come back with the other ones, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any others on?
I do, again, in it, in 4.7 does say, explore city code elsewhere. It just says code. Just for consistency, is it city code or code? And then in 4.8 and 4.9, one's increase awareness. In 4.8, in 4.9 it says market. I think that both of these could be changed or melded together. We can now say officially that we have a destination marketing organization. They've been, they had, they've been incorporated, right? And there's even a board member among us this evening right now. And so I think it'd be good for this document to, to maybe bring that in. So it says, increase awareness and access to outdoor recreation amenities in Old Town to provide recreational and entrepreneurial opportunities. I think that and the next one, market historic downtown. I think the goals of those sound consistent to me with what we wanted to achieve with the DMO. And I think maybe a policy that says, encourage the DMO to, which is, has the name of Visit Issaquah. Somehow I would think that should be worked in here. That'd be good policy-level statement.
Okay.
Show our commitment.
Any others?
That's all I had. Anything from Goal, so we can move on, thank you, from K. We can go on to Goal L, preserve residential neighborhoods.
This is our last element, last two goals.
Ozing.
Preserve the scale and character of the residential neighborhoods while ensuring a variety of housing that meets community needs. So this is where we talk about adopting the architectural standards in the single-family areas.
So how, it's one thing to say, your house needs to be a style. And if it's a style, what things it needs to be. So another thing to say, no bauhaus, yes to craftsmen, you know, so on, so forth, right? And so how do we know, like, I'm familiar with Palo Alto, I think, has seven. Like, how do we know what the right number is? And I, and I see that we had public input as to what sort of architecture they like. But how do we know what the right length is?
Well, the Historical Society actually did a book that covers the five, I believe, architectural styles of residential units in Issaquah. So we have that sort of established. We might need to want to rework it a little bit, it's a little dated, but that's something that we could base this discussion on.
So we would hire somebody smarter than us, who knows architecture, to do what we did with Central. And peanut gallery. So, so we'd hire an architectural firm that probably focuses, I don't know that we'd use the same one that we used in Central because they were more commercial. We'd want, we'd want some that deals more with single-family neighborhoods. And, and, you know, the, the villages had architectural standards that applied to residential. And I think most of the people think that the aesthetics of the villages are good, those who live there do. And so the question is, if we were to go down that path, you know, we've put a money ask anticipating you guys would approve this. Now, if you don't, the mayor's proposed budget would have one thing removed from it. But we did put an ask in to hire a consultant to do this for us next year. And there'd be a public process, so we, you know, we'd include, you know, neighborhood conversations about, you know, what the styles look like. And, and would it go all the way down to colors? I don't know. But, you know, we can, we can draw that bar wherever we want to draw that bar. It could be just architecture, but if you want a purple house, because we think maybe part of the attraction for Old Town is it's got that funkiness to it, maybe, maybe colors are completely open. So if you need to express your own individuality, fill lavender. So.
And my concern would be if you, if somebody wanted to build something that was really architecturally consistent with a style, but it wasn't a historical side, style in, in the valley, right? If you wanted to do bauhaus, right?
Right.
That's not a style that's currently reflected in the valley.
Right. So, so, you know.
So this is a policy that says adopt standard, develop and adopt standards.
Yep.
And, and do we, do we, and are you questioning that policy?
Questioning how it would be implemented. Because I'm not, I'm not convinced that it wouldn't just straitjacket what people do with their homes. If you're building in a, if you're building in, if you're building the Highlands or you're building Talis, I, it's to me different than if you're taking a traditional, a house that's maybe 100 years old and you want to do things like, like incorporate historical elements, but modernize for insulation and lighting and all that kind of stuff. You can wind up in some interesting places, so I'm just trying to understand.
So does that go as far for you that you don't support proposed policy 5.1?
Because I, that's, I'm trying to understand whether I would support it or not. Because I don't know if I would or not. But I'm trying to understand how much of straight jackets, if potentially straight jackets owners would buy.
Okay.
How else do we implement, achieve the goal of preserving the scale and character of a residential neighborhood while ensuring a variety of housings that meet community needs? I mean, so we need some policy statements that speak to that. And I personally thought that the adopt architectural standards would be a necessary condition to achieving that goal.
Really?
And then the how becomes, you know, the thing that I think Keith was talking about a minute ago is we will, you know, we still have a lot of work to do to figure out how we implement that. And I think that's where your, you know, your question is most appropriate.
Well, I think you could say that single fam, properties in single family have to stay single family and you could, you know, and you could say, don't, don't allow subdividing except for ancillary dwelling units. And there's things you could do without, without going to architectural standards, I think, to me, preserve residential neighborhood.
Scale, all right, scale is not as specific. Scale's easier to do, whoops, excuse me, than the architectural specifics.
Okay, so Tola remains unsure about 5.1. Any comments about 5.2? How reduce allowable heights? And the higher density areas are where?
The higher density areas would be right behind the CBD, west, just west of the CBD, which is multifamily medium. Sunset, which is multifamily high. And down Front Street is multifamily high on the east side.
And this policy does reflect what's come from the community, including the commission?
It does. And.
The details, I, to Tola's point, I think devil's going to be in the details. I mean, it could be uber-prescriptive or it could be some performance and some prescription. I mean, you know, that can be part and a reflection of the community conversation that would be the first part of that puzzle.
that would be the first part of that puzzle.
Okay, can we move on? All right, let's move on to M.
Maintain or minimally add to the number of households located in Old Town. Minimally was added, there was some public concern that they don't want more density there. Density means traffic and all sorts of other things. So that's why minimally was added.
My comment about this one is the policies seem to, are all about adding.
Modestly added.
Five three says encourage the provision of additional housing. Five four says retain and increase the supply of housing. Those were not in sync.
Would something like.
Goal in those policies.
Encourage the provision of a diversity of housing, different types of housing. I think that's really intent when you start to talk about senior housing, artist lots and ADUs.
So we've got, we've got language, coming out of the moratorium, we have language on housing and how we want housing to generally work. Me, can you just point back to that?
We have a housing strategy that isn't complete, but the moratorium only, housing only addressed affordable housing.
There were strategies around affordable housing in there. And yes, they were for the central Issaquah area. They were not for.
So it was citywide, so there was one.
There was one part of it was citywide.
So five, five four A, five four A was one of the strategies. And it was envisioned to really target Old Town in terms of, you know, trying to preclude what's happening in Bellevue, where basically you're getting a lot of, of houses on big lots getting torn down and turned into threeplexes, right? And so I think, you know, to your point, there is a little disconnect, I think, between the goal and the policies. You know, maintain housing stock. I think A, five four eight is definitely connected to the goal. That one, for me, seems pretty clear. You know, seeking out affordable multifamily projects for retention, that was also a housing policy.
All three of those were, yeah, A, B, and C, all three were.
You know, maybe, maybe five three disappears. I don't, you know, I'm not sure that, I'm not.
So the goal of five threes, you think you're trying to say more types of housing? Just to, without growing it, still be open to more diverse housing options.
Right.
And four is really very much about the preservation, I will call it more of, of kind of organic affordability.
Right, and we were looking at smaller.
It doesn't have an income requirement for someone to get into. It's affordable and we want to maintain it.
Right, which is why we were thinking smaller scale housing with the ADUs and artist lots, things that were more affordable.
Right. And A is about, by not tearing down, you're retaining something. B is, is really finding those kind of market-driven affordability, you know, their organic affordability, without some type of income restriction for people to live there.
Right.
This organic, this is about organic affordability. And that, I think that's. So the goal says maintain housing stock. And so I'm struggling with the wording of all of this. I agree with those objectives that we've talked about, especially five dot four. And if five dot three is somehow saying we want to encourage other types of housing options, you list the example there of senior housing, artist lots, what example, ADUs. I don't know, there might be, there might be just elements of our housing strategy as it exists that we can just repurpose here to be more clear. I mean, you're kind of doing that, maybe it's just the way the goal is stated.
Okay.
I mean, the goal seems maintain or minimally add. That's kind of saying, don't change density. Then the rest of it is just kind of broader, related to choice elements of our housing strategy.
I think, you know, I think, well. The number of ADUs and the number of artist lots, you know, if you look at five three, the number of housing units that that's going to generate is going to be small. It just is. But I think, I think there's definitely two, at least two things going on here. And it maybe might need to be a little bit unpacked.
Okay.
I think we could actually have some clarity around the goal, too.
Yeah.
I find the goal, some of the confusion that we're having is that the goal is probably not succinctly stated. And it leads me to believe what we're saying is, we don't want to grow this part of town. We want to have the same population in this residential area in the future. And I think we could be clearer on what we are really trying to accomplish here. And then we could get some concurrence that that's truly what we want to do. And then I think the policy statements will flow more crisply.
Okay. Any other comments about that area?
Yeah, I just think at a high level, there's, you know, the facts are that the community is saying super loudly and clearly, they don't want more density in this area.
Yep.
And we have a policy as a city to direct density to central Issaquah.
Yep.
Right?
Well, we've upscaled that, we've upzoned that. There's a lot of capacity there.
Right. So I just think this goal should somehow reflect those two facts.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And however it gets worded.
However, I am concerned about that because there is unused capacity in Old Town as well. And, and when we terminated the development agreements, we did these overlays so that we just set things to the limits of what was already built there. And, and are you suggesting something like that? It's like, hey, this may be zoned for maybe more height or than that there's now, but we're going to put an overlay on top of that to prevent that.
Yeah, do you want to see it?
Think about it.
So, so one of the things that we added, which we haven't gotten to yet, was kind of a demographic page, a list of kind of what is the existing stock and where do we see it going? And, and so.
Well, so, I'm going to give Tola a chance to, I'm trying to ask the question is, are you asking that we do something similar, that we actually somehow prevent people from perhaps redeveloping to use the full capacity, zoning capacity that's on their property that's unused today? So if somebody's single story and they really want to go to two, are you saying, stop that? That's what we did with the overlays in the, in the development, in the urban villages.
One house on one lot.
Well, this is a tough question. Because I don't, I think you have to, I don't think you should, if, I don't believe generally you should take things away from people that they're entitled to. But I think that, given that, we should try to honor what we're hearing from the community about reducing density. So I don't know what the exact, exactly how to do that. I just think that the thing, that our guiding principle should be that we want to direct density to central Issaquah. But I don't know what to do. Are you, I mean, I hear you, there's, the people can, can create some density in, in Old Town if they want to. And I guess I'm not saying that I think we should attempt to regulate that away.
So I would agree with that. I would agree with that. And yes, we have done quite a bit with our zoning and land use and other things, such as what we've done, you know, with land action ordinance. There's many things that have been done in the central area to incentivize long term. And it's probably going to be, you know, have high capacity transit there eventually as well. So nothing like those incentives and capacity has done elsewhere. So I'm kind of of favor of just kind of leaving. I mean, there's, there's some suggestions and they've spoken out, the community's spoken out. And I'm not, I don't, I don't think we should go beyond what that request is.
Got it. Appreciate you asking me, it's a tough question. I do, no, I mean, it's a good, it's, it's an important, you know, you know, I always talk about the, the right of the community to try to make what it wants versus the rights of the individual to have their, and this is a, this, you correctly point out that this is one of those, those, those times.
I'm going to do a time check. We have the immediate, short term and long term action sections to require. I talked to Christian yesterday, I said, I see this is slated for forty five. I think this is going to take at least twice as long. That's ten minutes overdue, so that would have been eight o'clock. So I'm just, this is more, I know we have another topic. I know at least one person is here to probably because of that topic. It might take us a little bit of time, so this is more of a heads up. But I do want to work expediently through these. I do have a number, but I don't think there are comments, I don't think they're major. But I want to continue working through this.
Okay.
This evening, still, for that goal of completing this. So let's go ahead to the immediate actions page, section four, action program.
Are you looking for me to go through these, or do you just want to ask for comments?
At least put the page up there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot we moved. But I will tell you, I looked.
You did it.
I double checked all these.
Okay.
And they do tie back to policies.
Okay.
And a couple were added because when we checked last time, there weren't any actions to go with the policies, so we, we've double checked.
Can you provide that information for us?
Pardon me?
You'll provide that information for us?
I have, I have that note here, tie back to threats.
Okay.
And I can tie back to the policies as well. When we took this to the planning policy commission, there were eleven, they added seven. So we have eighteen now.
So I'm going to assume that we've all read them. I actually don't have any material changes that I would be asking for. And I'll give everybody a chance to talk about this. I do have a comment about number twelve. It says, conduct a financial analysis to identify a funding implementation of. Funding for implementation of. I think that's kind of a mouthful. I mean, it's kind of funny to hear, to know that this recommendation has been made to the council that we should conduct a financial analysis. I think that just should be more directly stated.
More succinct, okay.
It could be, you know, fund the remaining portion of phase one of the streetscape camp. It seems odd that we would. I think in the process of that goal, you know, if someone, hey, we're going to have to do some analysis, that would come out of it.
Right, and that's in the streetscape plan right now, too, is the, to fund a fiscal analysis of how to do it. And that's where it came from.
It's part of, it's also in our capital plan. And we're looking at the unfunded portion of those more broadly right now, so.
Say do it.
Sorry?
Just say do it, just fund it.
Well, it just seems, if this is reflecting what would be put in there in the streetscape plan to conduct a financial analysis, I would kind of, if I had a chance to open that up, that streetscape plan, I'd say, it's kind of odd for us to say, conduct a financial analysis. But what am I missing? Are you trying to tell me something?
So, yeah, no, I think, I mean, so my take on it is, it's, it's to understand the costs of the remain, the rest of the streetscape, implementation of the rest of the streetscape plan and actually programming it out. Right now, there's money.
Okay, that's different than conduct a financial analysis.
Well, I understand, because right now, we've got money in for a part of Alder Street, of the Festival Street, but it's a, it's kind of a, it's a de minimis part. And so the question is, you know, as you guys go through your prioritization of capital projects every two years, you know, this was put out here to say, hey, we're going to ring the bell in the next conversation to get another piece of the streetscape plan implemented. And so maybe this needs to be reworded. I think what all, what we were trying to do is we took a pretty soft approach to say, just make sure you know what the costs are, so that then you could roll them into the capital projects list. Because right now, you know, we had estimates from the consultant, but, you know, I think you'd want Public Works Engineering to come back and say, okay, what's it going to cost to do some of these things?
So maybe a matter of semantics. When you say conduct a financial analysis, to me, that's, that's an analysis. But it sounds more like when we look at public works projects, you know, they have, we have an idea of what it's going to cost, but we have to get through thirty percent design to know more accurate costs. And that's really what you're saying, is come up with more believable cost estimates for these.
Right.
And so that we know what the total cost would be.
Right.
If you can, if you want to find other words to say, I think perform financial analysis, that is an action that says something different, I think, than you're intended to.
Okay.
The way it's being used here. Because it says financial analysis to identify funding.
And that's, and that was part of it, was to, yes, nail down what it's really going to cost, but also figure out what the sources are.
Right.
Which is what you do when you're doing the TIP. Yeah, sorry.
So that was, that was a comment about number twelve. And, and I think you've answered it earlier, and number sixteen, I wasn't sure what code revisions to extend to the sidewalk use district. I was wondering, oh my gosh, is this a special purpose district with taxing authority? So I'd read twelve oh five, and no, it's not. So I understand that now. I think that if you guys haven't looked at that, I definitely would encourage you to look at twelve oh five. And we had a little bit of a conversation about it today. And it's, it is, it's, it's, how did you say? It toggles today, it's special use permit today.
Right.
And in the, in that sidewalk district, it's what? It's?
It's, it's, it's a right.
It's a right.
So it's a property owner right, as long as they have indemnification and can keep a certain amount of the sidewalk clear, then they have the right to go ahead and use it. They don't need to apply for a special use permit and go through that process, which sometimes is intimidating for businesses.
So that's a big deal.
That's a big deal.
So that's what, that's what number sixteen is. And those are my only comments about these immediate actions. I don't have any other suggested changes or additions, either of my colleagues.
Yes, I have one question around number three, impervious surface.
Yes.
Increase to ninety-five percent.
Yes.
Isn't that the sort of thing that ecology yells at us about? Or then we have to do something different with like runoff or?
No.
Not here.
So, so you're tying impervious to stormwater, which is the right thing to do, because it's a stormwater issue. It's not, what you'll hear from folks, and this isn't, this isn't a criticism, this is, I think, how they process this, is impervious limits are a function of green space. In other words, if I want more green space, I don't want to allow for this because this allows you to pave your ninety-five percent of your site. But they're really two different things. Impervious limits should be about stormwater capacity. And when Old Town was adopted back in ninety-nine, the stormwater limitations within the city were a lot different than they are today. And so everybody's under NPDS requirements. You have to detain a certain amount and release it at a rate that's consistent with predevelopment. So, so the stormwater piece shouldn't be the regulatory piece. If we want green, then let's have green requirements as part of the code for Old Town. Let's require, you know, whether it's streetscape or planters or, you know, if we want the green, then let's, let's require the green, but not do it through impervious, because it's a, it's not the right tool.
And also, I would add to that, I think you're saying, impervious, you mentioned ecology. Whether, whatever development is put on a parcel, the stormwater has to be, it has, stormwater management has to be consistent with the laws from, from ecology.
Right.
Whether you have fifty percent requirement or ninety-five percent requirement. And it's what he said earlier. So ninety-five is not more harmful to the environment than a fifty.
It may require more work on the part of the developer.
Oh, yeah. It might be more costly, because if you choose to pave your entire site, you have to have a bigger stormwater vault.
Right.
To detain the water longer, and so, yeah. It's, so it's a trade off. They make those decisions as a property owner.
But it also allows them, depending on setbacks, potentially have a different massing of their building.
Yes, absolutely.
Chris, do you have anything?
No, I just was, as I went through them and I was trying to do the map back, it would be really helpful for me to, to be able to see that we have covered all of the policies and threats, so that would be super.
That is on my list to do. All right. Ready? Yay. Short-term actions.
I have a couple of comments. Number seven, develop and implement wayfinding measures, including Issaquah treasures. I just want to, I do want to comment that we have way, wayfinding has popped up.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, with different definitions.
Yes, and, and I'm going to put on my LTAC hat right now. And, and it's been a goal of that committee for a number of years. And it's one of the reasons our reserves have been. have been building up, is that we know wayfinding is not cheap, both the design and then to implement. But I do think that should be, I, I, I think it's great to have wayfinding in there. I think an overarching strategy, the city should have an overarching strategy for a single wayfinding strategy. There should be a design, and there should be a comprehensive implementation plan. And we have a lot of stakeholders that are interested in this, because it's not just businesses, but it's also our trail system, for example. Not only in town, but on the edges of town.
Right.
And, 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 so this is just my opportunity to make that comment. That wayfinding, I, I don't interpret its mention here. It's great that it's here, but I don't interpret its mention that it should have, Old Town should develop its unique own wayfinding system. And then 10 says that, "Conduct a financial analysis" thing again.
Okay.
And then I had a question about, and I think, okay, you did answer it earlier. Number 12 says, "Review and update the Oldie Town Subarea Plan within 12 months of adoption of new architectural standards and design guidelines." So I, I didn't understand why the, that, the adoption of those new guidelines was the trigger, but you, you, you mentioned it earlier, that it was, that came out of the, the commission.
It did.
And, and, that's...
Okay.
Any, guys, comments about the short term?
No.
Let's go on to long term. Our last section, longer term.
Number five's a problem.
I know. Already, already made him.
My only comment here had to do with number four. It says, "Implement, implement the Sustainable Action Plan strategies in Old Town." To me, that's, that's like, I'm not sure why that's a longer-term action plan. I mean, that, we, that's something we can do immediately. We have the Sustainable Action Strategy. And, and why we would wait until 2023 to say that, hey, redevelopment needs to adhere, it needs to be consistent with our Sustainable Action Strategy, I don't know. Why didn't we do it right away?
Well, so, you know, we had to, we had to, we had to...
I was going to say, something had to come down.
We had to allocate things based on workload. I think if, if the committee feels desire to push that one to short-term or immediate, I think that's fine. I think, I think staff, staff can, staff can figure that out. I think, you know, I think we put, you know, we hadn't heard a lot of, of interest, again, we started this like two years ago. So there wasn't a lot of conversation about the, the action strategies or bringing up sustainability, and so we put it lower on the list. If that has kind of pivoted a bit, and is a, is a higher interest, I, I'm not, I have no qualms about moving it up. Just tell me which bucket you'd like it in.
And I may be wrong, and, and maybe I need to hear from David Fujimoto again. I had one conversation with him, and it had to do some of the action we've taken recently. And, and he made it actually pretty simple. And maybe it was the end of the DAs. I'm not really sure what, what it had to do with. But, but, but all we have to do in a subarea plan update is somehow say, follow this action strategy. There wasn't a very elaborate need to, to do, so I, so I didn't see, I see that as a very low-hanging fruit, rather than something that might clog up a near-term work plan. And that, that could be my wrong, I could be wrong. I would, I'd say, double, double-check. Maybe you guys already know. But that's why I brought that up, because I had the impression that that would actually be very easy.
So, so any concerns from the other two about moving that upward, if that is a small work item?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, it, you know, it's interesting, your longer-term things don't start for five years, and, you know, that's an, you know, an eternity for some of these things.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and the one that I was going to comment on is actually the Park Strategic Plan, which will have expired by the time this, this one would kicked in. So the implementation, implement recommendations from the Park Strategic Plan, the current plan that's on the table has a sunset date before 2023. So, yeah, so it really, it really needs to move into the short term.
Yeah.
There you go.
And that's parks, that's not you guys.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay.
Okay, anything else?
No, it's great.
Did you want to go over the last page?
Oh, that's right. Demographics.
Well, there's just the map. We looked at that. Okay.
Yeah, just demographics.
So, we have completed?
We have completed.
A little review of the, the current draft of the subarea plan. Thank you for, it took a little bit longer, but we knew it would. But we did want to go through, at least get an opportunity to touch about every part. So I know that you've been diligently taking notes, and this is already intended to come back to land and shore for our October meeting, and with the, with the possibility that we could make a referral. The expectation is that we would make a referral back to full committee next month at this meeting for potential action for the full council at our second business meeting in October. So we're, we don't know that that's possible yet, but we'll, I know you will come back. It'll be on the agenda next month, and that's what we're striving for.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Kristen. And so I will now, before we move on to the next agenda item, this is a time when we get toward the end of an item, where we invite members of the public, if anybody wants to address, have any comments about this. Young man, would you like to say anything to the council about this item? If you want us to, you're welcome to come up to the podium and just introduce yourself, and, but it's, it's optional.
So, what's this? So, my name is Julian. I'm a high school student right here at IHS. I live up on Squawk Mountain, and I've been here for almost half my life, for eight years. And I've really appreciated the natural landscape of this city, and also the, how we're only like five minutes away from, a five-minute walk away from downtown, and we've enjoyed it every minute that we've lived here. So just keeping it historic, keeping all the, keeping it nice and, and local businesses here, that would be awesome for any considerations in this subarea plan. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Being no, no other members of the public are here, we can move on to the next item. Trish, so this, this is...
Sleep.
Oh, boy. Where is my pocket? Hold on. Okay, this is now, the proposed amendments to the Central Air, Central Standards Table, permitted land uses. Table of permitted land uses. We have 45 minutes in the agenda for, for this item. We have no idea about how long it's going to take. However, it also is slated to come back before this committee next month. So we're not expecting, so we, I think we can take, let it take its natural course, but we're not going to go over 45 minutes.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to introduce you all to Emily Arteche. Am I saying that the last name? She's our new senior planner. Today's her third week anniversary, and we are super happy to have her with us. We've been a little overwhelmed lately, so I wanted you to welcome her, and this is her first council committee meeting, so you guys have been doing really well.
Right. I'm sorry, what's your, your last name, Emily?
Arteche.
Arteche?
Arteche.
Arteche. All right, welcome.
I say it the Finnish way, not the French way, so I need to work on that. But tonight, we're sharing with you.
Well, I was just thinking of Hainan and...
Hainan, yeah. I definitely have a twang. We are working tonight on Central Isiqua's Table of Permitted Land Uses, and you might wonder why. Back in May, you all saw the amendment for self-storage and hotels and motels, and when you had a work session in July, you thought, hmm, we should look at the whole permitted land use table and not just those storage units and hotels. So in July, we sent over 800 letters to all the property owners in Central Isiqua, notifying them that we may be changing the permitted land use table, and inviting them to PPC's public hearing. And in August, we had that public hearing and recommendation. And so now we're here with you. The changes, first off, and most importantly, I think, is it would not affect an existing business. We're not making any of them close. We're not making them go away. We're not changing the fact that they can expand if they wanted to, because there's still provisions in Central Standards that allow them to do that. So these, this is only for new uses that we would be limiting. And what we did is we looked at the...
Hold on.
Yes?
Before you move on. That, that's actually very important. No existing
It is.
businesses are affected. Do you mean they're not affected, or, I mean, it would create non...
Yes.
That old phrase.
That old phrase, yes.
Non-conforming uses.
Right. And we recognize that in Central, that because all of Central has new zones, and so everything wasn't quite right compared to the zones that they had previously to what they could have now. So they were, in effect, all non-conforming. But that's kind of a stigma often with bank lending and that sort of thing. So we tried to get away from categorizing them as that, as non-conforming. So we had a different provision for how they can expand based on how well they fit with the regulations. So we allow both conforming and non-conforming to expand. They just have to do it in a little different way.
Okay, with that, that statement, no existing businesses are, are affected. However, some businesses, if they want to expand, will be affected.
They would, they could expand in a different way.
Okay.
But it's still the same section of...
So some businesses, and the, the, how they may expand, and you may elaborate on this, for some businesses, this will affect how they may expand.
It could limit their expansion.
Could.
Right.
Could.
Or, or prevent an expansion of a certain size.
Prevent's pretty harsh, but I think we would work with them, because part of the language is compliance most feasible, and I have the slide here at the end, if we want to go over that, what the actual quote says.
I appreciate you putting that right up front there, because that's a very strong statement, and it has big implications. And I think if we can refine that, let's go through this, but that would be my objective.
Okay. And how we went through this was, we went back to Central Plan and the Central Standards, where it talks about being vibrant, appealing, visual, engaging, all those things. And we tried to imagine if a new use came in on Gilman or East Lake-Samish Parkway, what new uses would we be super excited about, and what new uses would postpone hitting the vision for another 20, 30 years as that building sits there not really in keeping with the vision. So we went through the whole permitted land use table with that in mind as what new use would we not be super excited about having an additional new one in Central. And the list here is what we came up with. Correctional facilities, a heliport, agricultural food processing. A lot of these would either take a lot of land, they're not super pedestrian-friendly, there are a lot of traffic trips that wouldn't necessarily be the kind that we would want in Central. But also, the main piece of this limitation is that these are all permitted in other areas and other zones in, in the city. So it's not like we would get rid of all of these new, new ones in Isiqua. It would only be limiting them in Central. So are there any questions about that, the list?
Um...
In summary, okay.
No, well...
So we went, we also clarified some of the footnotes to make sure that the uses, for example, the light manufacturing, that if you did have a light manufacturing use in the urban core, let's say like a coffee roaster, or whatever it is, you'd have to have a retail component in the urban core. So it would be that sort of hip, cool part of the fabrication, but there'd actually be a retail component that would draw folks in, and, you know, like the winery or brewery, you could actually see how they, how they do their, their manufacturing. So that was a clarification in a footnote. And also, we clarified veterinary clinics, that your commercial boarding kennels are only permitted as an accessory to a clinic or a pet store. That had come up. So that's the, sort of the footnote part.
So Trish, going back to disclarifications, sorry, you and I didn't get a chance to talk today either.
Sure, no worries.
The previous slide, the summary.
Yep.
Is that, is that indeed a summary, or is that all?
That's the summary of the first, the original, the letter that went out. That's, this is what we limited.
Be capping the letter that went out, not what's being proposed.
Right, because PPC added a whole nother chart of changes.
Okay, I'm on board.
Good, no worries.
Before you leave that page, are we going to talk about each of these a little bit to get
We could.
just real clarity about what they are and are not?
We could. We could do that now, or we could do that then.
Okay, you don't have that later on?
No, I just figured they're pretty self-explanatory.
We might want to do that when we get to the actual recommendation from PPC. I think this was just the, here's a, here's a starting spot. We'll get to that.
So we're getting another chance?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
This slide, when we realized, we went to PPC for the public hearing, we realized that when we wrote the letter, there were a few errors in the, in the chart that went with the letters. And one of them, you might recall, when we did the district visions in Central, we took almost all the intensive commercial area out of Central. So there's only a few parcels left that are right on that, the main street. What's the main, what's...
East Lake-Samish, or Front.
There's, no, it's a number that...
Oh, 220.
I've lost the number in my head. But it's the frontage of IC is still in Central, but the other IC properties are not.
Right.
Thank you. And so to allow adult entertainment facilities on those few parcels that are right on the main road, we decided that we didn't want to propose that. We wanted, if you had adult entertainment, it would all go in the areas that are not on that, that front road that is still in Central. So that was a change that we proposed to PPC, and they were fine with that. The other correction...
Does that red X represent?
That's what the red X, yeah.
We're going to put three Xs.
But I, but we weren't quite that funny when we did the slideshow. And the other correction was the, the feed store, plant nursery, everything was, was axed out of that. And really, what we had meant to say, but we got too excited with the track changes, is plant nurseries with or without storage are permitted in those areas, not in destination retail, because remember, that goes away. But it's, it stays, but it's just the feed store and agricultural supply goes away. So that was a correction. And we hadn't put the recent amendment for self-storage. So in the original letter, self-storage is still all, is still listed. So those were sort of the corrections that we presented with, to PPC, and they were fine with all of those. So then, the next step, the next layer, is PPC then went through very carefully and, and added some more changes that the administration concurred with. And the first two, which I thought was brilliant of their, of them, was they thought that, that single-family, the duplexes and three and fourplexes were too, were not dense enough for urban core or mixed use. And they were afraid if duplex, complex, or threes and fours went in, we would lose out on that urban vision that we have for the urban core and the mixed-use zone. So they did not want to allow those two uses in the urban core and mixed use. They also did not want a funeral home, mortuary in the urban core. Go figure. And they agreed with us about adult entertainment. They added, to light manufacturing, we had a fabulous discussion, they wanted metal fabricators to be in there, and they also want a glassblowing to be in that list. And so we added them in the list, and we also added them in the footnote, that if they're in the urban core, they had to have a retail component to those two, light manufacturing. The next two, the general retail, right now, there's only two very big categories for, for retail in Central, and one is...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Am I going too fast?
Yeah, well, manufacturing light, add metal fabricator, metalwork, and glassblowing, glasswork to this permitted use category. And to related footnote 16, is related, is footnote 16... And to related footnote 16, is footnote 16 the retail component?
Yeah. Yeah. So this would add metalwork and glasswork to wineries, breweries, coffee roasting, clothing fabrication. There might be some more.
I just wasn't sure what footnote 16 was.
Right. That's the one that says in the urban core, you have to have a retail component to your light manufacturing. So for general retail, they were uncomfortable with only sort of a large and an extra-large component of retail. It started at 125,000 square feet up to that, or that and over, were the only two categories in Central. So they asked staff to come up with like a small, medium, and large. And they were trying to figure out a building that would seem to fit in all the areas that would consider to be small. And we came up with the Holiday Inn as being, you know, the Three Bears, perfect size if you wanted a small retail component, and that's 55,000 square feet. So we added a category called general retail service that says from 55 square feet up to 125 is the medium category. And the up to 55,000 square feet would be the small. And so the small would be allowed in all the zones. Is that, yeah. And the medium is not allowed in, wait, now I have to look at it again. The small is allowed in all the zones in Central Issaquah, and the medium is allowed not in mixed use or village residential. And then the large, we didn't change the large. It's, I'd have to look in the chart where it's... But what they're trying to do is not have everything be huge, to allow some little ones so that you can mix them with residential and they're not quite so daunting.
Trish?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. I was not there for the PPC conversation on this.
No, you were not there.
55,000 square feet is huge.
It's the same size as the Holiday Inn, which they came up with as smaller than like a grocery store.
So it's the size of Lazy Boy.
Okay. So you're saying that's too big?
That's a big retail space.
Okay.
I mean, that's a big box.
Okay. What would you recommend it be? Okay. That seems really small, but...
15,000 square feet's actually a fairly big size. Small retail space is 2,500. Sorry.
The...
Front Street Market.
No, former Front Street Market. Dollar Store.
Dollar Tree.
Dollar Store.
Dollar Tree.
Thank you. That's 10 or 12?
It's like 10 or 12.
They actually didn't mind the larger ones. They were thinking vertical and just using the height to get them for lorries. You know, they didn't want it, they wanted to get creative and imagining...
Because you're not, excuse me, Emily, because you're not on the mic.
Emily, you're not mic'd. You're getting flashed.
Oh. So you're getting blinked.
We want to capture everything that you have to share with us. Could you please come up to the mic and share that with us?
Or you can take the extra seat.
Come to the table, Emily.
No, you can take the extra seat.
Pop over there and you got to click on the thing to get the red light to come up.
And the first time you're on camera as an Issaquah employee, that means you have to buy the...
Yes. So it was a fascinating discussion. By the way, Emily Orteche, Senior Planner with Development Services. It was an interesting discussion and I found it very pleasing to think that they could imagine a very large store, a big box maybe, as the director said, but not on one level, going vertical. So, I mean, they could imagine multi-story, something like, you know, a Target in downtown Seattle that is, you know, not nearly the size as the Target here. I mean, spread out on one level, but multileveled. So they actually wanted to consider bringing in some of the big box stores like, for example, L.L. Bean, wasn't it?
Right. REI, L.L. Bean, all those that could go really...
Yeah. Getting creative how they might fit into the design standards.
Right. I think they mentioned Cabela's. They were on quite a roll that night. But we can certainly, and again, we were just sort of making up what we thought would be a small, medium, and large, but we could certainly go take the small, the proposed small down to 15.
So I'm hearing staff still having a conversation about this.
Yes.
And I would ask that you have, take the opportunity to caucus away from here and come back with a final recommendation, Chris.
Yeah. And I'm going to kind of pick up on that exact line of thinking and it goes, I think we need to figure out what we're trying to accomplish by creating the small categorization too. I think that will inform what the small should be.
And why that didn't exist to start with.
Correct.
Right. And I think what they're hoping is it would be easier to mix with other uses if it was smaller. If we allowed it to be smaller, an applicant could be more creative with what he could put on the site if he didn't automatically have to be 125,000 square feet.
So our minimum was 125,000 square feet?
So there's a question there, right?
Yeah.
Right. But I thought it was great that PPC recognized that there was a hole there, so...
Getting giant hole.
Yeah. And when we had talked earlier, Paul, you had asked about the structured parking requirement. So I sort of tagged that, and that was the piece that you had asked for for the moratorium. So I tagged that in the side that for projects above 25,000 square feet, retail service, 50% of the required parking has to be structured. So that was the number we picked for structured parking for retail. Okay. So those are all the PPC, the other really fascinating comment that came up is, in the PPC letter, the letter that was sent out, in the last column, that would not go in the ordinance, but it was informational, we had all the zones outside Central where the uses can go. And we were asked how many acres are in those zones. And so interestingly, when we did Central, there was no more retail zoned land. And we thought at the time, should we get rid of that zone? And then, you know, those things, you just don't know if you need it. And so we left it on the books, same with mixed-use residential. We left it on the books, not knowing how far Central would get before we started tweaking with it. And so maybe an outcropping of this exercise is that we get rid of the two zones that we don't have any acreage in. That's just a thought. But the other ones show all the, and not just vacant or redevelopable, this is all the land that's zoned, those other zones. And the city, just for information, so folks would know where they could go. Any questions on all of our delightful zones? Okay. This is Central. Purple being mixed use, red being urban core. And also, urban core is the Raleigh kind of hatched area. They're also in the urban core, but they have the development agreement, so the standards are a little different. And then the big zoning map, since we don't have one in here anymore, showing our fair city. And these maps also went out in the letter so people could see what we were talking about when we were limiting uses in certain places and where they could go if we did limit them. So the next steps are, we're talking with you all tonight on October 4th, and then if all goes well, you may have enough information to recommend back to council and we could have an action by October 15th. Questions?
Go back to your second slide.
Is this about the redevelopment?
Go ahead and answer. I don't know. The list.
But is it, the question on redevelopment is, do you want to see the language on how you redevelop?
Well, that would, no, that's not this question.
That's not true. That question, oh, wrong, wrong, wrong.
I want to see the...
That list.
This list? Okay.
I want to make sure I understand what these are.
Okay.
And many of them are self-evident.
Yes.
But I just want to be thorough in going through this.
Okay.
So correction facility, jail, secure, community, I don't. A transition facility...
It's a secure community transition facility. And those are called essential public facilities by the state. And although we can't say no, like if one wanted, if the federal government wanted to put one next to their land on the post office, the city could not say no because they're by law called essential public facilities and we have to accommodate them. But what we didn't want it to look so evident, I'm not sure that's prominent, I guess is the word, in the central permitted land use standards because we'd have to allow them anyway. And that we still left the one line that says, or others, you know, essential public facilities, because we can't not allow them. But we just didn't want to have the whole list like we do in the rest that lists all of them out, all the essential public facilities that are required by the state. Did I not make sense when I explained that?
Okay. We're saying no jails.
Right.
Heliport, helipad, so that's all...
And that would be a standalone.
What's that?
That would be a standalone if I just want to have one.
On the ground, what about a building top?
Right. On the trolley.
What about a building top?
The flying trolley. I think some more like Swedish could probably have had one. I don't think they did take the opportunity to have one, right?
But this would also eliminate them, even a building top, from the central area.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Agricultural food processing, is it different than just food processing? What about, I mean, I can imagine, you know, massive quantities of agricultural product, but I also can imagine much smaller footprint. So what, or just one thing, processing, so just help me understand what that use, what's the range of uses there that we're trying to eliminate?
I think we were trying to get away from, you know, a huge green bean, not that I don't love green beans, but you know, to have a big industrial kind of thing. I think if you wanted it to be smaller scale, like a brewery or a boutique green bean processing place, if you wanted it to not be processing and storage, because this, again, we're thinking it takes up a lot of room, it's not pedestrian friendly, it takes up...
Is that processing and storage or is it processing or storage?
Or and/or, either one.
So agricultural, so you used the example of a brewery right now. Is that not so? Food processing seems to be very broad. I'm just wondering if agricultural food processing is more narrow?
Right. Because a brewery, we have under light manufacturing because they might make it there and store it there, and they'd have to have a retail component if they're in the urban core. But this, we thought of was a bigger...
Yeah. I'm just trying to understand what it is. So a baker?
No.
No, what?
This is, I'm getting a load of corn from the fields.
Okay. So I think a bakery is like, is food processing. I could be wrong. They're manufacturing product, right? Food.
Right.
But so how is, so it's very specifically, when we're saying agricultural food processing, it has a specific meaning. I guess I could go look it up. I'm just trying to understand what that is and what it isn't.
Right. It would be like, in Eastern Washington, you have the big apple warehouses where not only do you store the apples...
This is props as opposed to like meat or other food processing.
Right.
Are these terms of art or are these R words?
R words.
These are Rs. And these are actually in the IMC.
Yeah. I was wondering if there was a, if agricultural food processing, storage, you know, was a...
A defined term.
Defined term.
Yeah. So and part of it is, again, back to the lens was, you know, it's not that these are bad uses. The lens was, is this adding to a vibrant streetscape? And, you know, do people who work in those kind of places get there by transit or are they all single occupancy vehicles? So there was a lot of judgment in this list that we culled out from the allowed list in Central.
Do we have definitions for them?
I think most of them we do in the IMC.
You would almost have to, right?
Yeah. All land uses are usually defined just because of that.
Yeah.
You know, is it this or is it that?
Right. Because agricultural food processing versus my new cidery that I'm going to build, right?
Right.
Right. I could check that. But most all of them are just from the old days in the IMC.
Trish and I had a conversation yesterday about the next one, building materials, storage, and sales. So there are a number of them already.
Yep.
Who's, they're non-conforming, or whatever, if we were to do this.
Yep.
Dunlumber, not Dun, I'm sorry.
No, Dun's gone.
BMC.
BMC.
Lowe's, Home Depot.
Home Depot.
It's so far sooner in lumber.
Right. They're already there.
Yep.
And we love them.
Are they vibrant?
I love them.
Love is very close to appealing. I'm just playing, so they're already there.
Yep.
And if we were, if we were to remove that as an allowed use, could you talk through what it would mean? Because I'm going back now to your first statement up there. No existing businesses are affected. We have businesses in the central area that have building materials, storage, and sales. So they clearly would be affected. Could you talk about that?
Right. I will pull up the language. Here it is. This is in chapter one, the first part is in chapter one of the Central Issaquah Standards. And under, wow, it's really little print on my screen, it says, under C, applicability, they apply to sites except areas owned urban village. Development and design standards are found in the applicable, okay. The purpose of this section is to allow the continued operation of existing uses and existing developments that were legally established when Central Issaquah became effective and to allow expansion of existing uses and developments that are consistent with development and design standards. In all cases, the development shall strive to comply with the goals and policies and the new developer obligations. That's the new part. Da-da-da-da. So the two terms over here under chapter two definitions, development and redevelopment are actual defined terms. And so I'll point you to redevelopment is considered to alteration, repair, addition, where construction costs equal or exceed 50% of the latest King County assessed building improvement value. So that's a lot of investment is why we picked over 50%. And it says over under applicability, that all development and redevelopment has to meet the standards when they redevelop or expand, however they call that. And the exception is, if you're less than the 50%, then you need to only meet the standards as, what's the words we use? Applicable, the closest applicable and, Keith, help me here because you're the one that...
Practical and feasible.
And feasible. That's it. I just needed the first one. And so if you're less than 50%, it's sort of a judgment call that we do that sees how close can you get to the code without having to move your building or, you know, put your parking lot on the other side of your building. You know, stuff that would just be, you just couldn't do it if you had to comply with everything. And so we base that on how much investment you're doing in your expansion related to how much compliance do you have to meet? And Keith may be able to, since you're actually the one that reviews those, how the balance goes when they come in for redevelopment? Is that a hard decision to make or is it problematic when they want to expand?
So, I mean, I think the intent of the city is to try and work with, you know, property owners to be reasonable in retrofits. You know, you can look at...
Redevelopment?
Yeah. You know, I mean, so like, so, I mean, think about the changes that were made to like Baja Cafe when that changed from Round Table. Not much really changed. Does it meet central standards? No. I mean, it's still at the back of a parking lot. We didn't make them move that restaurant out to Gilman. Now, Corner Bakery, actually, that used to be Denny's, and it changed dramatically, but it's because they found some structural issues with that building once they actually started getting into it. It did not move. We did not move the footprint up to Gilman because there's actually some utility encumbrances. So there's reasons why. So I think the city tries to be reasonable with property owners, but it's at our discretion. I mean, as you can see, we hold the cards.
Actually, I can't see that, so I'm going to add, that's kind of, I really couldn't follow the explanation.
Okay.
What is it? I heard 50%. I'm not really tracking this conversation. I recall from our conversation yesterday, Trish, that, and let's use someone in that in that category that has building supply, storage, and sales.
Mm-hmm.
If, um, if we remove that land use, they would be affected if they did redevelop their property to a certain extent. I'm putting words in your mouth, but I'm trying, seeking understanding. Is that correct, Keith?
So, so these provisions of the code have to do with more development standards? In, in other words, setbacks and placement on lots, as you can see, you know, structures, um, all, under development, all structures and other modifications of the, you know, of the natural landscape. So I'm talking about uses. Uses, I think, is about nonconformity, and I don't know that we have any specific language about nonconforming uses in Central.
No, we don't have that.
So it reverts back to the nonconforming discussion within the IMC.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, can pull that up?
Right.
Because I don't know it by heart.
Right, and I think too, while you're looking it up, um, the part that isn't mentioned here is, heaven forbid, there's a fire, um, and they have to rebuild the whole thing. Central doesn't ever talk about what happens then, but the IMC does, the other code does, and so that's, they would go to that code to know how much they can rebuild and the footprint, um, because we've already figured that out in the rest of the city, so that's what they would follow. So I think what Keith is saying, if there, if something starts to be nonconforming in that way, like, how do you rebuild a nonconforming use that's caught on fire and is all gone?
So...
There's a way to rebuild it.
So IMC 1808 is, uh, titled nonconforming situations.
Right, because it's use, buildings, and it's more than just one thing.
So if, um, so there's, there's sale of a nonconforming situation, there's a expansion of a nonconforming, um, we have a, we have a section of city code related to this.
Well, then, I would ask, for next month?
Yes.
Can we, can we revisit this after you've had another opportunity to take a look at? The question in my mind is, this, um, this one in particular, and there may be others, and I'm, I want to make sure I understand what all of these are. Self-storage was very easy and something, but I'm, and, and I, I still, I'm gonna have to take a little bit of time to, again, look at that agricultural food processing, to make sure I, I want to make sure I, I'm unambiguous in my understanding of what that is.
Yep.
Not that that's complex, but it could be a lot of different things, but until I see the definition. This is one, this is one where we know we have businesses.
Yep.
Where if we're gonna claim that they're not affected, I want to understand it. I think they are affected, and there are situations like a fire and a rebuild, like a sale, like a redevelopment. I want to know what those are.
I would say they are affected, um, but I think there's still provisions within the code for them to expand. It's just not, it's not open-ended like it would be if they were a, an allowed use. There's, there's, there's some caps, all right?
Okay.
So, but I think we can provide the committee with a better understanding of that.
Tell me, understand how that would be applied.
So that you can decide whether or not that's a, an issue for you or not.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So Trish, we can do a summary of like 1808-050?
Cool.
Can I actually ask a question back on your zoning map that you showed?
Yes. Central or the whole city?
Central.
Okay.
So what are, so most of the blank areas are like roads and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
On the main, on the main stem, after it crosses under I-90, there's like three big parcels, one just north to, on the east side of the river, and then further up by 56th, there's, there's two, one on the left of the river and the other, uh, on both sides of the river. What are those? They're, they're open space, if you look at them on a map. But they're not like unincorporated King County, are they?
No, no.
They're just, they're not zoned for anything, and I get why I-90's not zoned for anything.
They actually have a really light hatch to them, that you can't see from your chair.
Okay.
Is it community facilities? I'm not sure what Tola's referring to.
We own them.
Oh, the barn?
So it's, so it's City Park.
Oh, the barn, okay.
Oh, there's our parks.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's the Pickering Trail and...
It goes down, and then the three parcels...
So we own a little piece of land next to the vet and the coffee place that's kind of just on the north side of 56th.
Right.
Right, yes.
And then on the south of it, that is the barn.
Right, the three parcels of the barn.
The big, the big hatchy area, which doesn't look hatched from your seat.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
And there's a trail through that, connected to the park and go all the way to the lake.
It's great. Uh, it's a little wet, certain times of year.
Not now.
Not right now, it's great right now.
Could you go back to, it's slide, your presentation, it's slide three? By the way, you can hit the number three and enter, and it jumps right in.
I can't, I won't like mess up the whole thing? Whoa, okay.
Okay, metal, metal fabrication and metalwork, um, well, I guess more general.
And PPC, put that back in.
As if there was, with the, with footnote 16.
Mm-hmm.
Right, with, so a retail component. I guess I can just go, does the bill, the packet that we have point us to where we can just see all the definitions of these, the more detailed definitions? Where can I find them?
I'm hoping they're in 1802, but I can give you a list of them, if that would be helpful, of the ones that are in the list.
Well, just point us to where the definitions are.
So we'll send you either a link, if they're all within one section of code, and if it's a combination of IMC and Central, because we have definitions in both, we'll put together a composite based on the table 43B and send you that.
Okay.
And you're wanting a list of all the definitions, or just the ones that are removed?
I want to understand these.
The, just, so just the ones that are being removed, or all of them?
Yeah, I want to understand these.
Okay, just the ones that are removed, okay.
Just these? Because I would do the whole thing. We're gonna do the whole thing.
See, that's what I thought you were saying, but I thought Paul was saying something else. We're doing, okay.
It's not that many.
Okay.
Well, if you can, if it's just, yeah, I can find it myself, you can send me the link, thank you very much.
I think you can send, it's either all in one definition section, or it's in a composite of two.
Arts and two, right.
Yeah, so we can do that, that's easy.
Are there any implied sizes to any of these that, I guess, a distribution, I mean, when you were talking about agricultural food processing, every reference you made was big, big, big.
Right.
Is there, is that part of this somehow? Like a, a distribution center wouldn't be, probably not small. Uh, that phrase is usually used to describe a larger facility.
Right, and I think there were traffic, a lot of traffic trips that they felt would, that we felt would go with a distribution center, that there'd be a lot of truck traffic that wouldn't really help our situation in...
Do we have any of those in the city?
Distribution center?
Yeah.
FedEx, I mean, I would consider FedEx.
Okay, and they're in the central area?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna have to do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a little bit more work just to make sure.
Yeah.
I'm getting, I'm most of the way there now, I mean, boat building, I understand what that is. I think we have a boat sales place. Perhaps more than one.
Bays?
Certainly repair, there's a couple, I just don't know that they're in.
Yeah.
So I guess, part of what I'm saying, I, I want to be absolutely clear about...
The nonconformity piece?
Yes.
Absolutely, I get that, and I think that's part of our follow-up with you guys.
And what businesses, who are they? What are they? Do they know about this? I know you sent the letter out, uh, and I, and I appreciate that. I, I think this type of, um, change that we're considering does merit, just like we would make multiple attempts to contact our citizens if we're doing something in their neighborhood, and we want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I mean, I, I feel that, especially for businesses that would be affected by these, that, um, I think we should make an additional effort to make sure they understand that this is on the table.
Yep. I disagree. I mean, I think part of it is, you know, there's, there is a right time to let somebody know you're thinking about changing their world, right? Because you don't want to do it if, if we came up with a list of, of changes to this table, and you guys were like, you know, I don't agree with that, this is just, you know, I don't want to do this, I want to go there, or maybe you guys have not, maybe you didn't cast a wide enough net. I mean, before we reach out to a property owner and say, hey, we're about to make you nonconforming, and here's what that means, if you guys aren't supportive of that, I don't want to poke a horn, you know, the hornet's nest if I don't have to.
Well, this is not an agenda bill.
This...
It is agenda.
Is an agenda bill. Agenda bill.
Oh, oh.
7661.
Dang it, you got it first, yes, it is.
I'm taking notes tonight.
Yes, thank you, so much.
Okay, so I think that, that meets the threshold that you were just describing. All right, so I thank you for that, gentlemen, thank you for patiently...
Sure.
...attending all of my questions. Do you guys have questions?
So we have, so to recap, we have nonconformity clarification memo to provide you guys, we have definitions to provide you guys. I'm assuming, based on where we are today, um, that there would also be an ask for us to outreach to those potentially, um, uses that are falling within the nonconformity, so that if they have an issue, they would be ready to come to the next committee meeting to have that conversation.
Whether it is, awareness, who knows where someone might be right now with their intention of their, their business?
Right.
Right?
And, and, and I feel, it's incumbent upon us, if we're gonna put a new restriction that, we make every effort to make sure those people are, are notified before the action is complete.
Right, and we also have to look at the small, medium, and large retail.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Not that I was looking for more to do, but, right.